Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. It's Tuesday, July 16th, 2019. If you'll please stand and join me for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear God, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessings. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this day. We ask for your hand of blessings on this meeting. This evening, we will finally review a site plan for new construction in our downtown redevelopment quadrant. This is the culmination of years of work and a step in revitalizing our downtown. We ask that your arms of comfort surround Mayor Gerardo as she continues to deal with the loss of her husband and our friend Rod. Thank you for helping us accomplish our work and our goals this day. All this, we ask in your precious name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. For those of you that are new here, there are forms in the back of the room. If you would like to address the council on any item or just get up to speak, please fill one of those forms out and turn them in to the city clerk to my far left. That would be greatly appreciated. We'll move on with our first order of business, proclamations. I'll call Mr. Carl Langford up and read the proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. Good evening, sir. Parks and recreation programs are integral part of communities throughout this country, and our parks and recreation are virtually important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens; and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Park and Recreation Month, Temple Terrace recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I Frank Chalora, by virtue of authority vested in me as Vice Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, hereby proclaim the month of July as Park and Recreation Month. And, Mr. Langford, I'll walk this down to you, sir.
Can I say a few words?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
At your pleasure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chalora, members of council, Carl Langford, Leisure Services Director. Every year, I get to come up here and brag about all the great things that we do in parks and recreation. And as I thought about what I wanted to talk about this year, I really wanted to highlight the population that we serve. And the population that we serve is our entire population. And I asked a few guests to join me tonight to kind of demonstrate just how wide-ranging that population is. If I can invite Samantha Whiting and her little ones to come join us, and Mr. Bill Rivera to come and join us. Sam Whiting has been around in our department as a participant and an employee, and now as a parent for many years, and she brings some of the little ones with her. And Mr. Bill Rivera has been a participant in our Parks and Recreation Department for an excess of 30 years, and is active at the Lightfoot Center as a participant and a volunteer. And before you, we have 80-plus years of age range of people who come and utilize the services Parks and Recreation has to offer every single day. So, Sam, if you'd like to kind of talk a little bit about what you do?
Sure.
And introduce the little ones, because they are just adorable.
All right, well, this is Presley. She's our youngest. Jade and Lyndon, we are all a part of the Temple Terrace Gymnastics Club. We actually, the two of them came from practice today. I have coached there since I was 16, took a couple of years off, but I'm actually now back for summer camp this year. And we just love everything the Temple Terrace, the City of Temple Terrace has to offer, and we love partaking, so thank you for letting us come join.
Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the Director of Leisure Services. And I want to thank Kevin, Supervisor of Lightfoot Recreation Center, for inviting me to speak for just a second. I am a volunteer of Agent Services Nutrition and Wellness. I am proud to serve the communities in Temple Terrace. I am a Temple Terrace citizen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No, James, did you warn her? She started working for the city at, what, 16? Did you warn her? Yeah.
Okay, our next item is School Support Committee appointments. There are two vacancies on the School Support Committee, and due to term expirations of Ms. Carol Dell and Ms. Jen Wells, both are eligible to serve as additional, an additional three-year term, and have indicated that they are interested in applying. So I'll need a motion from council.
Move to approve both applications.
Second.
A motion of second. Is there any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
If opposed, motion passes. Thank you, and I see Ms. Wells in the audience. Thank you for your service. And I don't know if Ms. Dell is here, but certainly, if she's watching, thank you for your service. Thank you. All right, our next item is Hillsborough County Historical Advisory Council appointment. There is one vacancy on the Hillsborough County Historical Advisory Council. Mr. Jack Ritter was the sole applicant. So if there is any discussion, or I'll ask for a motion.
Move to appoint.
A second?
There's a motion to appoint Mr. Ritter, seconded by Councilmember Donahue. Is any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, and Mr. Ritter, I think I saw you. Thank you, sir. All right, consideration of the minutes of the previous meeting, July 2nd, 2019.
Move to adopt.
Motion is a second.
Second.
A motion of second. Any further discussion? Mr. Ross?
Question, I wasn't here. Is it appropriate for me to vote on this, Mr. Song? Is that, I read the minutes, but...
No, because you wouldn't know whether they were correct or not.
Right. So just stay silent.
Obstaining.
Or abstain.
Yeah, just abstain.
I'm abstaining for the record, sure.
All right. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor of the motion signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes with Mr. Ross abstaining due to his absence. All right. At this time, persons wishing to be heard on items that are not on the agenda. This is your time. Please come forward. I do have a few forms, but these are items on the agenda. So is there anybody that would like to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda? If so, come forward. Okay. See nobody? We're moving along. Communications petitions, none. Consent agenda, none. Public hearing and ordinances. Our first order of business is reconsideration of the first public hearing on ordinance 1482 regarding RZP 18-10 Tooth and Foot II LLC. I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask our city clerk, Ms. Mooney, to please swear in those that are going to testify.
Is anyone else gonna testify? Can you raise your right hand? Stand up and raise your right hand? We had to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I'll grab it.
Thank you. All right, and I'll ask Mr. Shown to ask council members for any ex parte communication. We'll start.
I've had none.
I've had none, except for the emails that I have forwarded previously to the city clerk.
I've had none.
I've had one. A gentleman, Mike Pergalotti, came to my house around June 7th and talked about the issue and gave me his opinion. It should not be approved.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, I'll ask our senior planner, Ms. Marion Abrahamson, will explain this item. Good evening.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm here to present RZP 18-10, the reconsideration of the first public hearing and reading for the rezone of 13401 North 53rd Street. The owner and applicant Tooth and Foot II LLC, as well as the agent, Mazer Consulting, are here. This location, again, is 13401 North 53rd Street. The zoning request is to amend the zoning from residential 7 to planned development on a lot that is approximately 0.87 acres. The existing use is a single-family home. The allowable uses under the existing R7 zoning is a single-family dwelling, the support of healthcare facilities, including ALF, and government uses, schools, libraries, recreational facilities, and utility services as well. The proposed use is a single-story medical office, approximately 12,000 square feet, with a floor area ratio of 0.31. The existing future land use is R18, which allows for a floor area ratio of 0.35. So the conditions of this rezoning, I'll say in front of you, sorry, I should say that you have an amended concept plan that we received today. So the conditions of the rezoning approval in regards, specifically in regards to the use, is residential, medical office, business office. The amended concept plan that you see before you has some changes reflected since the first time this came before you, and included in that is the access. So the curb cut that was previously proposed onto 53rd Street is now being proposed to be closed. Therefore, the chicane that is there now will remain in the same location as it currently stands today, and the access will be through the existing medical office parcel to the north. There's some other changes made to the concept plan as well. The applicant who is here today will be giving a presentation after I'm done, and they'll go into more detail about those other changes. So some considerations for council. As you see this item tonight, is that the Planning Commission has found the request consistent with our comprehensive plan. And if the rezoning is approved by council tonight, then the impacts will be mitigated during site plan review in accordance with the conditions in our land development code.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening. Do the PowerPoint. PowerPoint? Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Tyler Hudson, and I represent Tooth and Foot II LLC, in the Bauer family who own this property. Before I get started, I wanted to go ahead and introduce the project team briefly, who will be available to answer any questions that you might have. Ty Maxey is somewhere. Ty, hey, Ty. I've got Fadi Garcia over here. Scott McLaren, he is also one of our council on the case. So we'll be available to answer any questions once we get through this presentation. I know you all have seen this before, obviously. You got reconsideration, the very word up there on screen. I'm a bit of a visual person, so I thought it might help to have a little bit of a visualization of the changes that we've talked about, but also about how we got to where we are today. So let's start with that, how we got here. First thing, it's helpful to orient ourselves, which Ms. Abrahamson just did a great job of, exactly what we're talking about. You'll hear at certain points me refer to Phase 1. That's the existing property at the southeast corner of Fletcher and 53rd Street. Phase 1, it's the home of West Coast Brace &amp; Limb, a company that's been in operation here for over 20 years. I probably should have mentioned my own client, which is Greg and Lesbauer, who are here and will be speaking as well. Les has been a resident of Temple Terrace for 38 years. So that's the existing site. That's there today, and we'll talk a little bit about what that project could be if we're unable to expand our business as needed. But Phase 2 is what we're talking about. That's in the red area right there, and that's the subject of tonight's discussion. So a little bit about, now that we're oriented in space, let's get a little bit oriented in time. This goes back to 1996, before this property was even a part of the City of Temple Terrace. This planned development was approved in October of 1996. The Bauer family acquired it shortly after November of 1996. They've been operating West Coast Brace &amp; Limb on-site since then. In December 2017, that's really where things got started. There was a proposal to rezone this Phase 2 property as commercial office. There wasn't a very specific plan, but we knew that the business was going to be expanding. We knew that this was generally allowed in the framework of the existing zoning and land use provisions. So we went forward with that, and that was withdrawn, because the sense we got, despite having the approval of the Planning Commission, and despite having the recommendation of your staff on the planning perspective, that it was premature, that there wasn't enough specificity. So we withdrew that. That gets us to November 2018. November last year, we filed a PD site plan that was heard in April for this project. It was rejected by the city council. And in June, that's when I first had the chance to meet you all. We are here and asked for a reconsideration, which is a provision your code allows for, which was granted in June 2019, and here we are today. So I think it's important to first note, while we're orienting ourself, about what sort of support this project goes into this council meeting with from the experts that are both on your existing city planning staff, but also the Planning Commission. On six occasions now, a group of folks who are experts in this field have said that this is either consistent with the Temple Terrace, City of Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan, or with the land development code. It happened when we tried to rezone the property to CEO, but before we had a real sense of what we wanted to do. Happened when we first proposed this planned development back in 2018, which was denied in April of this year. And they also did it again based on the updated planned development that I'm gonna talk a little bit about tonight. Before we get into the site plan changes and some of the concerns that I know you're gonna hear from some of the neighbors in the next portion of this proceeding, I think it's helpful to talk a little bit about what this property could be, and what Phase 1 of this property could be, without even coming to city council, or really what the law and what the land development regulations allow as a matter of right. Because we're not saying that this plan is perfect. You all have been here long enough. There is no perfect plan. But this is a very good plan, and it's a plan that is much, much better for the neighborhood than some of the things that are allowed by right. So let's talk about Phase 1 first, what's allowed by right, if that no longer becomes a feasible option. Back in 1996, when the site plan was approved, that is a very long list of permitted uses, many of which I think are far more intense for the neighborhood. You're talking about a school, perhaps a charter school, funeral, funeral home. No one probably wants that. A newsstand is probably unlikely, but a tobacco shop might not be. So these are the types of uses that have a lot more traffic, they have a lot more intensity, and they might operate on weekend hours. Right now, this is operated as a business during fairly standard business hours, Monday to Friday, on the weekends and after hours. So it's not a lot of activity here. That could change, given the breadth of the permitted uses that were allowed for Phase 1. That's Phase 1 that exists today. Let's talk about Phase 2, the property that we're talking about right now. Offsite drainage facility, that's something that the code allows as a matter of right. Let's say there were some changes to Phase 1 that increased the impervious surface area, requiring more offsite drainage. It's unfortunate, but it's the case that based on the current land development regulations that govern this property, you could turn this into a drainage facility and a range of home healthcare facilities that I think are far more intense. They might not change the footprint of the building, but if you think about the staffing necessities of an adult living facility on-site, three shifts, people coming and going, families and friends coming and going, I think those would be far more intense uses. And those are uses that you wouldn't necessarily even have the power to regulate, because they're just by right, based on the current code. But the biggest by right use, and to be candid, the most realistic, based on how we're growing right now, is that. Section 1293 of the code allows offsite parking on residential uses, subject to some performance standards which we're confident we can meet. But that is not what we want to do. We do not want to turn this into a parking lot. But we aren't here for the third time, because this expansion is a luxury for West Coast Brace &amp; Limb. It's a necessity based on how much they are growing. And this is absolutely not something we want to do. But when we talk about how things could be worse, or unsightly, or more intensive, I would respectfully submit to you that the code currently permits things that I think would be much more disruptive to the neighborhood than what we are trying to do today. So concerns, we've heard them, and that's why we're here for a third time, because we really think this is a development program that does address those concerns. Number one is this idea of incursion, encroachment, invasion. We've heard it called a lot of different things, and it's the idea that this is a new commercial development southwards. I mean, we are turning, we are proposing to turn a residential property into something that is not residential. And I think this is the most important slide that I'm gonna show you all this evening, and I think the visuals really help here. Based on the land development that has happened, some perhaps happened before, this was annexed into the city, some perhaps afterwards, the property that we're talking about is in the green box right there, 13401. It is already surrounded on three sides by commercial development. That green line there, which would show the line of commercial usage in the neighborhood, really has the effect of squaring off what has become a partially commercially-developed area of this Fletcher corridor. On the other side of North 53rd Street, you have a medical office building that would fairly nicely mirror what we are proposing for our site. Behind us, just east of us on 53rd Street, you have a liquor store, you have a real estate office. I think if someone were to come here with 13310 or 13309, 53rd Street, and say that that is not an incursion, I think that would be a harder argument to make. And we've heard this about, well, what happens in the future? What happens if someone else wants to come again, and again, and again, and move further into the neighborhood? And respectfully submit that this does not constitute an incursion. Future ones, they might, but we're not here about that. We don't think we can necessarily base the decision for tonight's proposal on a different proposal, on a different use, and a different piece of property. We're only talking about the property here tonight at 13401. And as you'll see, I believe the cake is baked already with respect to how the commercial development should go. As Ms. Abrahamson noted, this is residential 18. So this already supposes a much more intensive and dense development pattern than further south in the lighter yellow areas there. Happy to answer any questions on that later, but that is a concern that we know is real. But with respect, we disagree that it's based in really how the development pattern has gone, based on this map. The other main concern we've heard about is traffic. And there's one thing that might have been missed, I think, at the first reading, and maybe even at the reconsideration hearing, that I want to make clear we're on the same page on, is that this property does have access in an existing curb cut off Fletcher Avenue. That's how a lot of people come and go off Fletcher. The curb cut on 53rd Street that exists currently near the chicane, they're both utilized, but we do have access on Fletcher. I think there might have been some concern that this is just gonna funnel more and more traffic into the neighborhood. And that's not at all what this is gonna do, as I'm gonna explain a little bit. But we already have access, and as someone who's been to the site, the Fletcher curb cut's really the easiest one to get to you, based on where you're coming from. So that's what this looks like right now, looking southbound into the neighborhood. There's a chicane, which is, I guess, it's a fancy word for kind of a median, that pops out. There's very, very big "do not enter" signs that are as glaring as the text that I put on this slide. It is very clear that you cannot go southbound into this neighborhood if you miss the curb cut. You've gotta find a way to turn around. So let's talk about some of the site plan changes that we've made to address these concerns. First thing is the changing in the buffering on the southern elevation. I think like a military barracks was what someone maybe thought the first one looked like. And distress, renderings were very preliminary, but we heard the neighborhood loud and clear that there were concerns about how this is gonna face the neighborhood. So top is before, bottom is after. As you can see, we're talking about kind of an ivy wall that I think will create the impression of some articulation on the facade there to the west. Added a mirroring set of windows on the other side, I think is a much nicer look for the portions that are facing the residential area. Setback, we were at, it's a 54% increase here, I think 11.83. It actually slightly tapers down as you go west to east on that southern setback. I think it was about 11.3. It's a 54% increase now. It's just over 17 feet. That affects our development program and the square footage that we really need for the site. But we heard loud and clear the concerns that folks want this pushed as far away from the residential property line as possible, and that's what we've been able to do. That's a very significant increase in setback. Next, there are some current concerns about the dumpster. And we talked about this a little bit at the first hearing, that we'd be willing to move this during the site development process, but just so there's no question about our commitment to that, we've moved the dumpster from the southwest corner of the property to the northeast corner of the property, so it's about as far as it can get from the southern, from what will be a single-family home to the south. And we completely understand and sympathize with that concern. The biggest change, though, that we have proposed, which Ms. Abrahamson hinted at, though, is the curb cut. We proposed adding a curb cut, a second curb cut, south on 53rd Street, moving that chicane down, so that big "do not enter" area that you saw would just be moved further south, but it would prevent more, it would allow more vehicular traffic into the neighborhood. We looked through it, and the Bauer family thought that while it's gonna be, it's gonna be harder to make things work, it is possible to make the site work close to as well as it otherwise would without that curb cut. Because we have one on Fletcher, we already have one on 53rd Street, and in order to, as a sign of good faith, and to show that we hear the neighbors and they're concerned about this incursion and increased traffic, that we're willing to get rid of that curb cut. And so that's something that we've submitted to staff. You have it in front of you if approved tonight, which we hope this does get approved. That is what will be approved. It's not a promise to do that later. The site plan shows no curb cut onto 53rd Street, which I want to stress, that is a significant concession for us, because that means that all of the internal parking is gonna be mediated by the existing cross-access between the two parcels, which we believe is sufficient. Would have been more ideal to have that, but we're changing this, because we understand and have listened and have heard to the concerns that the neighbors have. And with that, that's it for... And with that, that's it for my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think we may do that after the public have had a chance to comment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Could you remind me of your name, please?
My name's Tyler Hudson.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, if there's anybody in the public that would like to comment on this item, please fill out a form. I do have a couple of forms of folks that would like to address the council. I will call you up one at a time. But if you have not filled out a form, you'd like to address the council, please fill the form out and turn it into the city clerk to my far left. All right, our first person to address the council is Mr. Brian Straw. Is that correct?
Yeah, Straw, sir.
Straw, sir, I'm sorry. Come forward, and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Councilman and Vice Mayor. I've been here before on the same issue. I live at, I own, I'm a taxpayer, and I occupy the residence at 13310, one of which Mr. Hudson had already mentioned. I live across the street, catty corner, to this property. It's been, Mr. Chalera, you actually recommended early on, I remember you said, these things can get very challenging with the neighborhood. And it's been a frustrating platform to be part of and hear the neighbors' concerns. Unfortunately, I've been at odds with the neighborhood with this. I feel it's a very short-sighted, fear-based, that people are saying no to. When I look at this, and I'm thankful that Mr. Hudson had mentioned, my biggest fear is that if you say no to this proposal, we all walk away, the neighborhood feels like a victor. But unfortunately, and I printed this out to reference today, Section 12923 of the code allows them to build a parking lot based on the existing zoning. So if you say no, they have the freedom to build an open parking lot. That's a concern for me. I'm concerned about drainage. I believe it would be resolved if there is a building there, as proposed and as developed. I look at how can we work together and make this the best solution for the neighborhood? Unfortunately, the property has already been purchased, and they own it. Saying no to this land use does not turn the property back to the neighborhood, as some of my fellow neighbors tend to think that's going to happen. It's not going to put a house back together with a family that's thriving there. I think we all agree that's what we would like, but the reality is, that's just not obtainable at this point in time. I'm asking that we look to move forward and make the best use of this property based on what it is. And it's, saying yes gives it a complete solution. It allows it to be a building that's consistent with the property across the street. It would be a better viewpoint for me as I go to my car and I'm in my front yard, instead of seeing a dilapidated house, I would see a property that is well-kept up. The other thing is, I do ask, this curb issue and the chicane, it does not work. I mentioned this before, and I'm going to ask again. I ask that this approval be done, but also block off 53rd at that point. We have now, this would bring the commercial wall on both sides of the street across that, we could put up a barricade or a wall, and no longer use that as access through to the neighborhood. That would give all those pressures and relieve a lot of tensions about this so-called idea of encroachment into the neighborhood. And allow that permanency that we all want to feel, that we don't want the neighborhood to keep developing through. So again, I think it's a long process to go through, but if we continue to look at each and every angle, I think it can be a win-win for the neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Steven Gerros. And after him would be Mr. Doug Young, so just a heads up. When you come up, just give your name for the record, please, and you have three minutes. Good evening, Mr. Gerros.
Good evening, Mr. Chalera, Vice Mayor, Council members. My name is Steven G. Gerros, resided at 5304 East 122nd Avenue for 34 years, president also of the Pleasant Terrace Civic Association, which is that area bound between 56th Street on the east, 50th on the west, Fletcher on the north, Bauer on the south. Today is the 50th anniversary of the launch of the Apollo 11 to the moon, lest we forget. As a historian, I appreciate that. Just thought I'd provide that for the record, for those of you who don't remember. Also, lest we forget that the last time I was here to discuss this item, and where reconsideration was asked for, and I guess granted, there was an implied, I thought, legal threat, that if the council didn't consider its decision in April to disapprove this proposal, that there was, the person who spoke for the party that wants all this done, implied that they might take some kind of legal action. And I know it was discussed. So I just want the folks, everybody, to know that there was that there, that, as Seinfeld will say, there was that matzo ball hanging out there, maybe. I don't see any redeeming value. You know, you look at something here, and you say, what is this going to provide? First off, all the people, the good people in Temple Terrace who approve these things and work on these committees, God bless them, I couldn't do that, I just don't have the... But do they live there? Do they live there? Will they be affected by it? Our neighborhood, the vast majority of neighbors who have contacted me and some emails I've forwarded on, are not in favor of this. The odds are prohibitive against this, prohibitive against the neighbors. Our association doesn't see any redeeming value as being added to our neighborhood. I was interested that the gentleman kept using, who presented the case for this, the word disruptive. Why is even disruptive considered? I mean, why would you, Pleasant Terrace, when you drive into the city, or you look at their website, it says, "An amazing place to work," I live. Well, it's an amazing place to live, that means implies, you live there, you have homes, and you welcome families and neighborhoods. And it's amazing. How does this add to the amazement associated with Temple Terrace neighborhood, our neighborhood? How does that add to it? And like I said, they convicted themselves, if you will, to be whatever, somewhat dramatic is, when they use disruptive, it won't be too disruptive or as much disruptive. Why is it even going to be disruptive? And the idea at the end here, to block off 53rd Street if you live in that area, for folks like myself and others, who use that as a way to get out to Fletcher Avenue, as opposed to going on 56th Street, that would be a horrible idea. That'd even be making things go from bad to worse. So anyway, I thank you for your attention to this, the fourth time I've been up here talking about it. Lord, I'd like to see this thing put to rest, and we have our neighborhood back.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Doug Young?
It is a neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Doug Young, I live at 13309 North 53rd Street. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Council. A couple of very interesting things that I have to say, I've got three minutes. One is I hope that the board, who controls Temple Terrace, who makes the decisions that build Temple Terrace, agree to stay steadfast with the original decision they made. I don't know for what other reason why they'd not want to, because Temple Terrace and Pleasant Terrace is a very quaint little subdivision. As far as something that Ryan said, or Brian said, about the house being dilapidated, that house is not dilapidated. It's a good concrete block home, it's got 20 years left on the roof at least, it's four-bedroom, I think, three-bath, house could be sold, easy, renovated, whatever. But there's one main thing that I don't think anybody has brought up. I don't know if it was disclosed on the purchase of this property, but back in the late '90s, the mobile gas station had a major leak in one of their fuel tanks, excuse me, in their main fuel tank. I came into my home one afternoon, on a Saturday afternoon, opened up the door, and my wife was in the bathroom taking a shower, and it smelled like a gas station in there. She had the hot water on, and it just fueled all over the place. Well, we come to find out that the gas had got into the water aquifer, aquifer. And they had to take and shut down our well, they had to take and pull water from Fletcher to bring us city water. And there's one, two, three, there's about four houses, four or five homes, that were affected by this. But if you take this piece of property, and you start putting in a 14,000-square-foot building, and taking the ground up, and start moving around, disrupting and stuff, all that ground is going to, some of that ground that's infected, it's going to go back in that water aquifer. And the homes that are down south of us are still on wells. It's eventually going to start affecting those. And I just don't see where, why this wasn't brought up before, because it is in court. They were sued, and if something like that does happen, it may not happen today, it may not happen tomorrow if you agree to let this happen, but the people downstream could possibly get affected by that. Cancer, whatever, it may come out of fuel, I don't know that the fuel, I've been in business 43 years, I own a paint and body shop here in Tampa, and I know that when things come up with me and business, I try to do the best I can. And I try to, you know, I don't have any money, but I try not to push my weight around. But I do hope that the board realizes that they are the people who run Temple Terrace.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker would be Mr. William Scott Sanders? Sander?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. This is the first time I've been able to address this, but I live at the corner of 131st Avenue and 53rd. There is only two stop signs there, but at that intersection, I'm a disabled vet, I'm home most of the day, I see most of their vehicles, this company's vehicles, numerous times, coming down 131st and going up 53rd. They do not access off of Fletcher. And if they're causing that much traffic going up to there, through our little corner there, how much more is going to pass through there? There's children on these streets, there's kids on their street, I have kids, and I don't think that we need any more traffic going through an intersection that, right now, is not a four-way stop, but there's a lot of traffic. And I just don't think that it would be good for the neighborhood, because if it eases on down a commercial property, and it could just keep on easing on into the neighborhood, what's next? The next house? What if it doesn't look that good? Oh, let's tear it down and put another business there. I don't think so. It's a residential neighborhood, and I think it should stay that way. And I just don't think it would be good for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, this next speaker, I will do my best. Ira Aaron Price, is that correct?
That's it, but I don't see him. I know him.
Okay. Mr. Ira Aaron Price. Okay, fill the form out, but we'll put it off to the side, just in case he left the room for a little bit. All right, our next speaker is Leslie Jones, and after that will be Ms. Karen McAluso. Good evening. Please state your name, and you have three minutes.
My name is Leslie Jones, and I live on 53rd Street. And I'm probably going to reiterate what most of the people in our residential neighborhood have been saying, that it is a neighborhood, it is residential, and that's how we want to keep it. And right now, they're talking about if they're going to build more out, then they're going to take down a house. Then they're going to build again and take down another house each time that they need to expand, or each time that another business wants to come in and be, you know, right there. They're talking about putting up a barricade, which means that, yeah, people won't be able to come in, but we won't be able to get out either. And if there's a hurricane, if there's any kinds of things like that, any emergencies, because sometimes the emergency squad comes down our road to get to the hospital and stuff, it means they're not going to be able to get through either. And if they don't know that it's closed off, if they've got a new driver, and then they have to turn around and go back, that could be somebody's life, okay? Like one of the gentlemen said, the house isn't dilapidated. And these people bought the house so that they could build on that property, but it's a residential house. And then if their house is dilapidated because nobody wants to buy it, because nobody wants to be next door to a business, what's going to happen to the house next to it? What's going to happen to the house across the street? And when they were here before and talked about it, one of the neighbors on the other side had talked about how the employees come out, and they have lunch, they throw their trash in the other people's yards, and they do all of that sort of stuff. What's going to stop this business from doing that? We're opening up a Pandora's Box. And as a member of the community, we hope that you guys will see that this is residential, we don't need any more traffic. People come through there anyway. You know, it says "do not enter," but people come through there anyway, and stuff like that. So please take it into advisement that we would like to keep it residential and not have the business expand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Ms. Karen McAluso, and then Ms. Sharon Rambo. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Karen McAluso. I live at 13107 North 52nd Street. I am one street west of 53rd. I have lived there for 41 years, way before we were annexed into Temple Terrace. We wanted to be annexed into Temple Terrace, took two times, but we made it happen. We love our neighborhood, and it is a neighborhood. We're a very diverse, very eclectic community. When people come to my house for the first time, mostly, the comments that I get for the first time is, wow, I had no idea this community was back here. Because there's no real reason for them to come into the community other than if they live there. But we always welcome people in the community. Also, you also find, I don't believe, I haven't researched this, but just from being in the neighborhood for so long, you don't find homes for sale very often in there. And when they are for sale, they sell fairly quickly. The whole point of this is that, I reiterate, you know, what all our neighbors have said. My concern is that the first one in opens the gate just a little bit, and then the gate opens a little bit more, and a little bit more, and it's just going to start happening. And I respect businesses, I believe, and I believe in growth of this business. But businesses move all the time. I don't see why they couldn't try to relocate somewhere in Temple Terrace, into the development area, into someplace else, and to stay away from our neighborhood and leave it like it is. I'm concerned about the increased traffic, and just the general changing of the whole part that makes our little community right there. Even though we are in Temple Terrace, it's Pleasant Terrace, and it was named Pleasant Terrace for a reason, and we'd like to keep it that way. And just, you know, cut down on, or not add to, any of the traffic that we currently have. And I respectfully ask that you consider all that, all the neighbors. I really feel bad for the neighbors on 53rd. I'm on 52nd, like I said, I'm not going to be near as affected as they are, and I really feel bad for them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McAluso. Our next speaker, Ms. Sharon Rambo, and that will be the last speaker, unless somebody else wants to speak. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Vice Mayor. I live on the block, Sharon Rambo, 12004 North 53rd Street. Now I can start. I live on the block behind Chick-fil-A. And I mean, thank goodness, we incorporated into Temple Terrace when we did, and blocked off the roads. So now the cut-through traffic isn't as bad as it was, but it is still there. And when people do it, they decide to go 60 miles an hour, like they're not going to get caught. And it's very scary. And I mean, I thank Temple Terrace for making Pleasant Terrace what it is, you know? And I, like others, are concerned that the encroachment, you know, would just take over. And I see USF owning the entire neighborhood in 50 years anyway, but, you know, not now. This is our home. The owner of West Coast Brace, maybe he should think of building it next door to his house. This is our home. Thank you.
Okay. Is there, anybody else who would like to address the council?
Yes, sir.
If so, come forward before I ask the applicant for a rebuttal. I have one more, another speaker, please.
Try to speak.
Just let them. When they're done, we'll ask you guys to come up. Just let them. When they're done, we'll ask you guys to come up. Just, Mr. Pergalati, just give your name and for the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Council, Vice Mayor. Michael Pergalati, one three one zero five North Fifth Third Street. I just want to say that, listen, I'm all for, for small business growth, but they can go right down the street to Net Park or Telecom Park and, and do this. We're surrounded by commercial all the way around us. And, you know, they, they don't need to come into our community. And I'm, I'll keep this short. I'm just asking, Council, please, please help us keep our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. At this time, I will ask the applicant to come forward and give them an opportunity for rebuttal if they'd like to do so.
Good evening, guys. My name is Greg Bauer, the third-generation owner at West Coast Brace and Limb at fifty-three eleven East Fletcher Avenue. My grandfather and father started in prosthetics and orthotics back in nineteen seventy. It was my father, Les Bauer, that brought our organization to Fletcher in nineteen eighty-one, and then to our current location in ninety-nine. That's right, we've been here for twenty years in Temple Terrace. I personally grew up on River Hills Drive in Temple Terrace when we moved here in nineteen eighty-one, and took over ownership of West Coast in two thousand and two. My father still lives in the same house on River Hills. And, and with our organization, we've grown into eighty employees over this time with five locations all around the Tampa Bay area, and treat over ten thousand individuals a year. This location here in Temple Terrace has been our headquarters ever since ninety-nine. The types of relationships and patients we serve predominantly live in the surrounding area. We do business with James Haley VA, Advent Hospital, USF Medical Group, Moffitt Cancer Institute, and most importantly, many of the residents here in Temple Terrace. These individuals require our service in order to replace missing limbs, or need other types of technology that treats skeletal and muscular disorders. The good news is that we have built an excellent reputation over the last fifty years in our community, and have been successful with our growth. I've lived and seen how Temple Terrace has evolved over the last three decades. I've also seen how the surrounding communities have all grown over the last twenty years, and see that growth is occurring all around us. I like to think that I'm still young and have a great future here with West Coast Brace and Limb here in Temple Terrace in order to sustain the relationships we've built with our immediate referral sources over the last fifty years. And yes, we've grown enough that we need a little bit more space. So a couple of things that I find, just I, I don't really understand, is that number one is that this is the third time we're here asking you to, to allow us to stay here in Temple Terrace. Yes, after all of this, for the last two years, we, we want to be in Temple Terrace. And we've had the support of the people that you employ at the Planning Commission. It's not like we're requesting anything that's not, it's crazy, and they're approving it. And these are the people that work for you all. Number two is, what kind of message is Temple Terrace portraying to businesspeople, residents that have established their roots for over thirty years, supported you, supported Temple Terrace? It's kind of like, be careful, don't grow your business too big because we might ask you to leave. And that's hard to understand. But guys, I, I just, I thank you very much for listening, and hopefully now you understand the impact of what this decision can make on our future of our family business. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir.
I'll be brief. Just want to touch on a couple of things that were mentioned during public comments. First, on the environmental issue, I just wanted to note that when we acquired the property in twenty seventeen, we had a Phase One environmental site assessment done, which, which showed no issues. And we're certainly happy to enter that into the record as part of the site development process, if there's any concerns there. That was a very scary comment, and I just wanted to make sure we kind of nip, nip that in the bud. You know, it kind of comes down to cars and dominos all over again, right? It's traffic, and it's this domino effect of what's going to happen if, if you approve this. And I just want to touch on a few things. At this, not at the risk of over-lawyering it, because lord knows we have enough lawyers in this world, this is a quasi judicial procedure. This is about evidence. It's not about speculation, it's not about conjecture. It's about what's in the four corners of the application that we've proposed three times now, and it got better each time. And this is an excellent proposal. So concerns about this domino effect of what happens if you approve this, and others, and others, and others, that's speculation, that's conjecture. And with respect, I don't believe that that can or should enter into your decision about whether we have met our burdens under what your law says today. And the second point related to that is on, is on the traffic point. There's been talk about concern for traffic, but Planning Commission folks, your own staff that looks at planning, looked into this. There's no traffic study or transportation study that substantiates any of the risks that the, that some of the folks in public comment addressed. And, and I think that matters. I think it matters that the weight of the evidence here, I believe, is in, is in favor of, of supporting this application and the condition, the improved condition that it's in now compared to November, or compared to November of twenty eighteen. And with that, we're all happy to answer any questions that you might have. And I thank you for your time today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. There not being any more rebuttal from the applicant, I will ask the council if they have any questions of the applicant or staff. Yes, sir. Mr. Os.
Well, I do have a question for you, Mr. Hudson, but before I get started and lose my train of thought. Mr. Bauer, I owe you an apology. At the hearing in April, I was incorrect when I said that there was no curb cut on Fletcher Avenue, and that people would have to go up and make a U-turn and come back. That's not true. There is a curb cut, and I apologize for being wrong in my facts there with that. So, Mr. Hudson, I hear what you're saying about traffic. And, and I get it. There is no traffic study or survey to, to quantify the potential effects on the neighborhood. Therefore, it is somewhat speculative, but I think it's also reasonable to assume if your business is successful that people will come there. Pretty hard to have a successful business if nobody comes. My question for you is, is it possible, and if so, is it agreeable, for you to consider readdressing that property if this is approved, to give it a Fletcher Avenue address? And the reason I ask that is, it's hard to do a traffic study and quantify cars that aren't there. So even if we put machines out to do a traffic study, the business isn't in operation, there's nothing to count. So any traffic study would, by its nature, would be speculative and incomplete because you can't count what's not yet there. If you type in the address of the property, I typed it into five different search, well, not search engines, but directions. I typed it into MapQuest, I typed it into Google Earth, I typed it into something called Bing Maps. I also typed it into Waze from this parking lot, and I typed it into the GPS on my truck from this parking lot. I can't print those. And all five of them direct people coming from this building, if you're coming from the south, up north on fifty-six to one hundred and thirty-first, turn left on one hundred and thirty-first, and then turn right on Fifty-third. Now, I really like what you've done with the entrance. That was one of the things I was hoping you would do, and to me, that's a big concession that you've made, and I thank you for that. But if I type in the business of your existing business at fifty-three eleven East Fletcher, it takes you up to Fletcher and turns you left. So is it possible? I don't, I don't know. I'm asking. Maybe, maybe Mrs. Abrahamsen knows. Is it possible to readdress this building and make it like an A and a B, so that the search engines direct you to Fletcher instead of through Pleasant Terrace? And I don't, I don't, not to be facetious, but I don't, I don't think that's entirely speculative and not based on anything. I mean, I type these things into five engines, search engines, so that's not totally without some basis.
So typically, as I'm sure you know, wherever the front door is faced, that is the address that it would be assigned to that, to that street. However, we, our GIS department is the one that coordinates addressing, and they work with Hillsborough County. Hillsborough County is kind of our contact in regards to addressing. Any addressing issues would have to go through the county. So we could certainly get with the county and see if that's something that they would recommend or allow to do and bring up your concerns. But, but I would, yeah, I would have to run that by our GIS department, as well as the county, because it's a little bit atypical.
Sure.
However, since this won't have access, direct access onto Fifty-third, you know, that would change the scenario a little bit as well.
Sure.
So I cannot say for certain.
Well, I didn't think anybody would be able to say for certain. I kind of was interested in the petitioner's take on this, if it's posture.
So, I mean, our take on it is, it's, it's a reasonable request. It's something we're willing to look into. It's not something we can commit to. That seems like an excellent condition. Would like to discuss a little bit the way it's written, obviously, but for the site plan and review process to suss out. I mean, obviously, the, the directions you're talking about is, we, we are coming from the south, and there's, there's three other cardinal directions that I think would probably lead you to a different approach that, that wouldn't be through the neighborhood. I completely understand the concern, and I think it's something we, we are willing to make that a, a condition that, if reasonable, I mean, if it's going to cost enormous amount of money, or it's something that's going to cause problems for folks to get into our existing site, that I think it's reasonable not to do it. But with deference to the city attorney, if there's some way to write the condition, yeah, we're, we're okay with that. And we, we absolutely understand where it's coming from.
Okay.
We, we don't have an interest in people coming through the southern, coming from the south necessarily, if it's as easy to come from a different direction.
Right. What, what would the hours of operation be for this facility? Do you, has that been established yet?
Eight thirty to five.
Eight thirty to five? And that's Monday through Friday? Is your current facility open on weekends or evenings or anything? And this is, requires probably a little speculation on your part, but I don't have any idea how big of an operation you're talking about. Do you have any idea how many patients would come in daily if things went according to your perfect plan? What's your capacity?
Fifty to seventy-five patients.
A day? Okay.
If I could, along the same line, what, and I don't remember, what's the, the projected usage of the building? What are you going to put in? What's going to be running out of there?
It's going to be a complimentary medical office facility to what's, what's already existing on what we referred to as Phase One.
Okay, so they're going to be coming in the front entrance, and they're going to be going back to that location, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I say something about the uses of the building in the back?
Sure. That's what I was thinking.
Come on up, come on up.
The secondary building, the new proposed building, is going to be mostly to move a lot of our administration back to that building, so we can then see increasing clinical in the front building.
Right. That's what I, that was what I remembered from the initial application a year and a half ago, that it was going to be your administrative offices.
So that is why the address isn't a big, I mean, it's not a, it's not a sticking point, because it's not going to be open to patients and things like that.
Okay, so the question with that is, you said you had, how many employees there?
I mean, total West Coast is eighty. Working out of that building is probably forty to fifty right now.
Okay, so where are they parking now?
Right in the front.
Make that your designated employee parking, and then that way, you don't have, nobody's going to, nobody's going to be looking for that as any kind of a location.
Correct. You mean the, the back, correct.
There's parking.
That is our plan, so we can open up more availability to patients that can't walk really well.
And if you designate that as employee parking, then your, your proclivity to coming in that way is not going to be there, because they're only going to be going to, in off of Fletcher Avenue.
That was the plan.
In all likelihood. I sure can't, you can't guarantee that for everybody. But I don't know. Are we still questioning? Could we comment?
No, no, we're questioning for staff and petitioner. Mr. U.S.
This is a, this is a question for staff. City manager, question for staff.
Charles.
Where?
Charles.
Mrs. Abrahamsen. Okay, here's my question. We've heard a lot about if this is not approved, that there's some current, there's some things that can be put in. And a question for you, certainly a parking lot can be put in this, this property under current zoning. Okay. And you mentioned adult living facility, a church or something. Let's use adult living facility. Could that only go in the current structure, the home that's there, or under the current zoning, could that be demolished and a new structure be built?
That is correct, yep. It could be redeveloped.
It could be redeveloped under the sizes that we're looking for now? I mean, it could develop under the?
It would have to comply with the R-seven zoning standards in regards to lot coverage and, and maximum building coverage and, and that, that nature. This building itself is a little bit larger than your current R-seven zoning would allow for. But, yes, but it would be able to be redeveloped. The setbacks.
So they could, and the same concept, this, this home that's there now be demolished, a new building, smaller, built at the back of the property and a parking lot in the front?
Correct. Well, the setback, I don't have that information in front of me, but it would have to comply with the R-seven setbacks, which I believe is twenty-five feet in the front. And it's five feet setback on the sides.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Donahue.
I don't have a question, I have a comment, so if you have a question, go ahead.
Well, it's just for staff, any question for staff or the petitioner, and then we'll close the public hearing, and you guys can have discussion. So if you have any questions for, does anybody else have any more questions for staff or the petitioner? No? Okay. So then, at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I will ask the clerk to read the title of the, of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning zero point eight seven plus minus acres of land located south of Fletcher Avenue and east of North Fifty-third Street, with an address of one three four oh one North Fifty-third Street, from zoning classification, single-family residential seven, to planned development for RZP eighteen ten, providing for amendment of the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Muni. Now, the, the order that we're, we're to follow is, if the ordinance is acceptable, I need a motion, and then the council can have discussion. So that's where we are with it. So council members, what's your pleasure?
Are you ready for a motion or conversation?
The, we need to either, if the ordinance is acceptable, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading, and then discussion, ask council members for comments. So.
For the purposes, for the purposes of discussion, I'll make that motion. To approve it for, for, on the first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Schlesler.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Okay, council members, now we're open for discussion.
Okay.
Who would like to open?
I'll, I'll start.
Ms. Donahue?
I'll stick my neck out first, because we have a crowd of citizens who are hearing tonight how much of an effort this business person has put to preserve your neighborhood. Now, I, I know that there's a lot of speculation about what-ifs. And I, I'm the first one. I said that last time. I said, oh, no, 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 we can't do this, because what if it goes somebody else, and somebody else, and somebody else. But then I, you can't, you can't make a decision on this property based on what-ifs. And after seeing, and, and I did, again, go and sit in the parking lot and watch what was happening in the parking lot. And to me, the fact that you've gone to the extra effort to block off with a wall any access onto the residential street speaks volumes about how much you do care about the neighborhood, and how much you care about your business as well. And so, you know, when sitting there, you know, there's a lot of talk about how encroachment, but the wall will now connect to the other wall that's on the other side. So that's the reason I'm changing my mind, is, is that they heard, and, and that's the benefit of coming to this type of meeting and having this type of discussion, is that now the neighbors understand that a lot of effort has gone into hearing you while having it both ways. So now we, so now we have a win-win. Your neighborhood is going to stay with the, with the chicane in place, and your neighborhood is not going to have anything different, other than the house is now a business. But the big difference is that there is a decorative wall around it, which will keep people. Now, a homeowner, you can drive into the driveway, but in this case, if I'm reading this correctly, no one off of the residential street can turn into the building. They have to, they have to come in, into the parking lot and then go in. So, so that's the reason I seconded your motion, and, and I will, I will vote to approve this tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Is there anyone with your subscription?
Okay. All right. I was against this project back when you bought it, although I understand why you need to do this. I thought that it was relatively short-sighted trying to buy the house, knowing good and well that the neighborhood was so much against that the sale of the house to, to the business complex. Unfortunately, we painted ourselves into a bit of a problem. Unfortunately, we painted ourselves into a bit of a problem here. It's somewhat complicated, given the fact that we are a quasi-judicial body, and we're sitting up here having to make a decision based upon existing facts. And the facts are stated in such a way that our experts, expert testimony, says that we should go ahead and approve this, as both in our staff as well as the county, the planning organization. Which puts us in a bad position, because when we have residents that come up and want to talk, your testimony, while it is passionate, it is not, it's, as I said, it's speculative and conjecture. Not attorney, don't profess to be one, but we have been advised that you can't take the passions of the residents into play when you're dealing with the circumstances of the particular case. As I said, I'm against it. I think that it's a bit of an abuse of the area because you're expanding into an area that's now what was considered residential property. What I would like to see come out of this is some type of effort by the city in order to, I'm not sure how we do this, but kick it, you know, can we set up a buffer zone? Can, you know, because we're going to have this again and again and again coming down the pike. We now have, yes, we've straightened off the line for the commercial area, and in theory, I guess that makes it a little more palatable. But as we go in other areas of the city, we have this jigsaw-type situation. And I would like to see if, you know, as a result of this, even though it's probably going to pass, in my opinion, can we do something in the future that we can protect the residential areas better? I don't know. We have to see what can be done with the planning group. But I'm against, in principle, I'm against it because it's an encroachment, but encroachment is not a defensible position. And we're setting ourselves up for an ultimate potential overturning by a judge, in which case it's going to cost everybody a heck of a lot more money to defend it when case after case has been already proven that that position is not a defensible position. But while I'm against it, I will vote to approve on this one.
Okay, Mr. Ross.
This was a tough one for me, I have to tell you. I did a lot of preparation for this meeting since April and since you repetitioned. I read hundreds of pages of the comprehensive plan. I read court cases involving rezoning requests that have been disapproved. I've had extensive conversations with our city attorney. I've had conversations with our planners, with our city manager. I have worked on this probably harder than I've worked on most things for this council. What I really would like to see happen here is what most of us would like to see happen is this to have remained a single-family residence, and things go on like they have been. But that's not reality, and it's not realistic. I came here tonight with a fistful of research, prepared to say no because of Land Use Policy one point four point six, Land Use Goal Two, Land Use Policy two point one point one, and on and on and on. Armed with comprehensive plans, armed with case law. Unfortunately, when I got here tonight and I found the modified site plan on the dais, it rendered most of my arguments moot because most of them have been answered by the elimination of the driveway, the increase in the setback in the movement of the dumpster, and I was left with maybe one if I stretch it, and that was about it. I would join with my neighbors that I would really like this to have remained a single-family residence. I have been at the front of the fight to preserve Pleasant Terrace from encroachment in the past. I was right out there in the front when we had to deal with Malibu Apartments to propose building, and we prevailed, and we've prevailed a number of times since our neighborhood was annexed into the city. But in order for me to vote against this at this point, I really have to just consciously ignore the law and just do the easy thing for my own convenience and for the popularity of my neighbors. And I took an oath of office to uphold the law and the ordinances of the city, and I just would have to completely ignore that oath in order to vote against this. So I will not put my own convenience and my own popularity in my neighborhood above what the law says we should do, which in my opinion is pretty clear that you have property rights to do this. I thank you for making some of the adjustments that you made. I would have probably voted against it had you not. The driveway was a big thing, in my opinion, and I know that's a cost. That was a sacrifice on your part, and I appreciate you doing that. I do think each case is on its own, and I do think the neighborhood, the residents, while they may not be pleased, I think they need to remember, we all need to remember, because I lived there too, we all need to remember, if we denied this, first of all, we would be in court tomorrow, but besides that, suppose that we weren't. Suppose that, suppose that they didn't, and they just said, okay, what are we going to do with this property now? Because they're not going to turn it, they're not going to sell the house as a residence. They have a business. They're either going to make it a parking lot, or they're going to evaluate what other types of operations they could put there that are permissible under R seven. And as we've heard from our own planning staff, there's some pretty undesirable things that they could put there, group homes and A L Fs and things that are going to generate traffic, tobacco shops, we need another one of those in Temple Terrace, right? And so, things that will generate traffic at night, things that will generate traffic on the weekends, this won't generate any of that, even if we do get some traffic, and we all know we probably will, I don't know how much, but we'll probably get some. I would suppose that Chick-fil-A probably generates a lot more than this place will, but if we get some, you're talking Monday through Friday during business hours. They're closed at night, they're closed on the weekends. Can we speculate? Yeah. Would we rather it be a house? Of course we would. We can all agree to that, but if we follow the law here, I don't think we have much choice.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Is anybody else, Mr. Chambers?
Same thing, the neighbors. I've known a lot of you, a lot of years. I've worked with some of you on committees. I would like it to stay a house, too. That's not going to happen. Thank you for the changes you guys have made since the last time. That's really helped me, and everybody else has said everything else.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. And, you know, I just want to say a couple of things and sum a few things up. First of all, I certainly want to thank and appreciate the neighbors for coming here tonight because sometime hearing after hearing, it wears people down, and they don't come back, and they lose faith in the system. You know, I also want to, you know, thank the Bauer family for having confidence in Temple Terrace and keeping your business here. It is a nice business, and every time I drive by there, it's very well-maintained, it's very professional, it's actually what we need more of in Temple Terrace. So I want to thank you for being here this long, and you live in the city as well. Here's the way I'm looking at it, guys, and this is the way the city has to look at it and how we have to make our decisions. The planning commission approved the comp plan. Now, they're in charge of the comp plan. If we go against the comp plan in the court of law, number one, looks very bad. Okay, that's number one. Number two, we have a Temple Terrace Development Code. This project is within those guidelines of the Temple Terrace Development Code. Really, as much as some folks are not happy with it, you may look back on this one day and say, I'm glad we went that way, because if you don't go this way, you have guidelines. The reason the city does a P D zoning, it's called a planned development, and they can structure that how they wish. They could put in hours of operation. Mr. Ross, you had a brilliant idea with changing the address to Fletcher, and I would ask that that even be considered as part of the motion. That, that, I think, would really, now that everybody, everybody works off their GPS, and when they plug it in, takes them that route, I think that would certainly help eliminate some of the traffic there. And as mentioned tonight, the decision that this council has to make tonight has to be a quasi-judicial decision, has to be based on evidence and facts. And those evidence and facts have been presented here tonight. If they put in a parking lot, you, they might have to put up a few shrubs. That's it. If they want to put in a retention pond, again, a few shrubs, and then it gets overgrown, you got to call code enforcement. If these folks spend substantial amount of money to enhance this property to be in line, you know, I don't know that they're really cutting into the neighborhood. It's really in line with the commercial businesses along that Fletcher Avenue corridor. They're going to have a substantial investment there, and if it's any reflection of they maintain the front, I'm sure they're going to maintain the back in the same standards. Cutting that driveway off so it's not entering the residential neighborhood was a big plus, a big plus. Not moving the median where it's encroaching more into the residential neighborhood, you're closing in, another big plus. I mean, they've tried their work with the neighborhood. I don't think that they sat here and said, the heck with them, we're abiding by the quasi-judicial guidelines, and we're going to get this done. If you don't do it, we're going to sue you tomorrow, and that's what will happen. And we're not afraid of being sued, but we certainly want to be fair and look at the guidelines that are in place. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure that this council's not giving into this or giving into that. They're looking at the facts, and I think everybody has spoken very eloquently. The neighbors have expressed a lot of emotion and passion. I certainly, you know, applaud them for that because it's their neighborhood. It's their neighborhood, I get it. But we have to base it on the facts, the laws, and the parameters that we have to work within. So, I think the council has stated everything very clearly, and I certainly want to thank everybody for being here. If there's no further discussion, we can go ahead and call for the, call for the vote. But I did have a suggestion about possibly amending the motion to,
I don't know that we can.
As part of the P D, is that, so the address can show, if it's legally possible by the county, which, if that building was all torn down, and they developed it new, front and back, it would have a Fletcher Avenue address, more likely. I don't see how the county would oppose that, but I would like the, at least the suggestion is, put into the P D requirements, and the petitioner said that they really didn't have a problem with that, that it would show a Fletcher Avenue address.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we have on occasion in the past petitioned the county. We used to assign our own addresses, and here recently, within the last couple of years, we started working a lot closer with Hillsborough County so that we don't duplicate addresses. Although we work with Hillsborough County, we really, they don't dictate to us addresses. They do work with us closely to identify addresses for the purposes of nine-one-one responses. I don't know that that will be a problem. We'll find some solution to that. It can certainly become part of the P D, and it can certainly become part of the site plan approval that we bring back to you. This has got to have a site plan approval brought back to you. So there's plenty of opportunities to incorporate that suggestion. I think that's a great suggestion to try to reroute traffic, and certainly if the applicants and the owners are buying into that, I don't know why they wouldn't. I think that that would be a good approach to eliminating some of the traffic in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
I don't, I think that just the mayor mention of you wanting that as part of the P D condition. Again, this has got to come back to you for a second reading. We can certainly incorporate that into some of the discussion that we bring back to you on second reading. Leave the motion as a stand, and so that it comes back in the second reading.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. We'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor, signify by?
Aye.
Supposed? Okay, motion passes, and this will be, there will be a second reading on Tuesday, August sixth. Thank you all for coming. If the council will allow me a little bit of flexibility, what I like to do is we have some of our police officers hanging out here, and I'm sure they want to go home. They've been sitting here, driving, working all day. If we could move a couple of items up and take D and E now, and hopefully, it shouldn't take that long, and move things along, if there's any objection to it. Okay, okay, having said that, I will go ahead and move item eight, D up, and I will call Captain Lowell to explain. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, Mayor of the City Council. Mike Lowell, Captain of the Police Department. Before you have a resolution to approve a labor agreement between the city and the Fraternal Order of Police, police officers, detective, senior police officers, and master police officers bargaining units. We began negotiations with the F O P bargaining units in February of this year. We concluded negotiations in April, on April seventeenth, with a tentatively agreed to contract. The F O P bargaining unit ratified that contract on May second and subsequently executed that contract. The contract, which is up for review this evening, is the same contract that was presented to council and previously discussed in the shade meeting. At this time, staff would recommend that council approve this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Captain Lowell. All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this matter? If so, please come forward. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Courtney Baldwin. I represent the men and women of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge one oh one here in Temple Terrace. I was first elected as a representative, and two thousand and thirteen have served in that capacity since then. I participated in three total labor negotiations, and during that time period, I can honestly say this has been the smoothest one. The city and the body both faced challenges in the past which prevented us from evolving with the times. As such, we began to lose quality officers who brought a wealth of knowledge to our department. In the past, we presented different pay plans to the body, which caused division amongst the rank and file for various reasons. I am proud to say that we stand before you in full unanimous support of the contract, which is here for your consideration. This pay plan will allow us to retain quality officers whom we have invested so much training in and will truly allow us to catch up with the times and the surrounding agencies who at one point had us dead last in accounting and pay. This would not be without the efforts and determination of your union representatives, who I must thank for coming together and working as a team to achieve the goals of the body. Mr. Stevenson, for always supporting us and showing us genuine care since his inception as our city manager. Ms. Boswell, for coming to the table and taking the time to understand our step plan and ensuring that it's best for both the body and the city. Ms. Bledsoe, and the amazing human resources staff who helped ensure our articles were in line with city rules and regulations. The command staff to include Deputy Chief Sealy, Captain Lowell, Captain Prymore, and Chief Albano. They came to the table as a collective team and made this an absolutely pain-free process for us. Without their leadership, we could not have accomplished what we have today, and for that, we are grateful. Lastly, we would like to thank you, our council, and our mayor. Since the start of each of your respective campaigns, you have constantly showed your support for us, and it carried over into your tenures. We would not be able to do our jobs without the support of the amazing citizens, our staff, and elected officials. It reaffirms that Temple Terrace is a place where families can live, work, and play in peace. We are all proud to be your police officers, and we appreciate your continued support throughout the years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? So please come forward. Okay, see nobody. At this time, I certainly would be happy to entertain a motion to adopt the resolution approving a three-year.
Move to approve the contract before.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion by the council?
I mean, what can we say? My comments are that just hearing that this negotiation was smooth and painless is an amazing thing to hear, because as you know, you know the ins and outs of our city. You know what we've been struggling with to try and get you to this point, and hopefully, this is not the last of that effort. And so, I am more than happy to add my vote for yes, to support all of the officers. Thank you so much for what you do, and hopefully, this will help you know that we really mean it when we say thank you so much for all you do, and you can take that to the grocery store.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Donahue. Okay, see no further discussion. We'll go ahead and call on the motion. All those in favor, signify by?
Aye.
Supposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, our next item, again, we're going to move E up, and I will call Captain Lowell up again. Good evening, sir, you're busy tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, Mayor of the City Council. Again, Mike Lowell, Captain of the Police Department. This resolution is a resolution to approve the contract between the city and the Fraternal Order of Police bargaining unit for the police corporals, master corporals, sergeants, and master sergeants. Again, similarly, we began negotiations in February, we concluded them in April, and this contract was also ratified by the body on May second of this year, and has also been executed. Again, this is the same contract that we presented to you in the shade meeting, and staff would recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody which is to address the council on this item? See nobody? All right, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a two seconds is a popular motion.
You probably haven't moved to approve.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Supposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, guys. All right. We'll move right back up to the item we were left off on, and that is the resolution to adopt conditional use for Tequila Mexican Restaurant, 7827 Temple Terrace Highway. I will go and open the public hearing now and ask the city clerk to please swear in all persons who will testify.
There were security.
Oh, yeah.
Tell the truth, hold the truth, and not the truth, so help you God.
Okay. Thank you. And then I will ask for any ex parte oral written communications. Mr. Chambers, we'll start with you, sir.
None.
I have had none.
None.
I've had none.
I've had none.
Okay. Super. Thank you. And I'll ask our senior planner, Miriam Abraham-Hamson, to present, please.
Good evening, again, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to present now conditional use application 1902 for Tequila Mexican Restaurant and Grill located at 7827 Temple Terrace Highway. The applicant, Jennifer Trichios, is here with us this evening. This is located on the southeast corner of Temple Terrace Highway and 78th Street in the River Run Preserve Shopping Plaza. The future land use is commercial. The zoning is commercial general. The lot is approximately 2.05 acres. The restaurant itself is about 2,600 square feet. The restaurant currently holds a two COP alcohol license, which allows them to serve beer and wine. They would like to apply for a four COP, which would allow them to sell liquor, as their name implies. Tequila Mexican Restaurant, they'd like to serve some tequila. So, this requires three waivers from our code. The first one is from section 4-64A, which requires a four COP or any restaurant that serves liquor to have at least 2,500 square feet under a permanent roof. This location currently has 2,000 feet under a permanent roof and 600 feet in the outside patio. The second waiver would be from section 4-64B, which requires at least 150 seats in a restaurant that serves liquor. The request is to allow the existing 100 seats to remain, 85 of which are indoors, 15 are outside on the patio. The third waiver would be from section 4-63, which requires a distance separation of 1,000 feet from the two locations selling liquor. One is already existing, the Shamrock Bar on the corner. The location between... Oh, excuse me. The distance between these two is 161 feet. So, the request is to allow that distance of 161 feet rather than the 1,000 feet that is required by our code. Staff believes that the approval... Oh, excuse me. The condition of approval, I should say, is that this approval remains tied to the restaurant itself.
Thank you.
Bless you. And should this location... Should the restaurant choose to move, or should it go out of business in this location, then the conditional use will be null and void. Staff believes that the waivers will not have a significant negative impact on the surrounding land uses or community, and therefore, the staff recommends that council approve the resolution for conditional use application 1902 with the requested waivers.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here? Do they wish to make a presentation?
Hello.
Good evening. Just give your name for the record, and welcome.
Well, we've been in Temple Terrace for seven years.
Just give me your name for the record, please.
Bernie Ayalomer, son.
Okay.
We've been here for seven years, and almost eight years now. We wanna stay in business here, but we need to sell tequila. It's necessary.
We are happy to be here.
Yeah. And we would really like this. We got a letter from the landlord. Doesn't have any problems with it. We got a letter from the owner of the bar next door. He doesn't have any problems with it. Then, we can have more seating. We have space for more seating inside and outside, so we can do that as well. But we'd just like a liquor license.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Super. Council members, do you have any questions of the applicant or staff?
I have a question for Ms. Abraham-Hamson.
Yes.
I saw in the backup material that this is unique to this business. If they discontinue or move, it doesn't apply anymore. But what happens if they sell the business to somebody else?
In that situation, it would still remain in place.
What about the liquor license? Do you know? Is that unique to them, or does that go with the business also, if they get it?
The new owner, I believe, would have to reapply. So, this... They still need to go through the state.
Right.
So, this just allows them to get the zoning approval from us and then apply through the state. But anytime there's a change in ownership, I believe they need to reapply through the state. So, this would remain with that business and the location.
Okay. These people are very credible. It's been... They're very good. I don't have a problem with this at all. But, you know me, I'm always thinking there's a boogeyman around the corner. But what happens if somebody comes and buys their restaurant and then turns it into another kind of beast?
A different restaurant?
Yeah. A different thing. Does this conditional use die when they sell, or are we stuck with this new business that maybe aren't as nice people like these people are?
If they change the actual business, change the business name, change the business itself entirely, then it would be null and void. So, it would have to remain the same.
Okay. So, we get a chance to approve this for new people?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, staff or applicant?
No. I think it's great to see a small business grow to the point where they have to come to us and say, "We need to do something a little bit different." And so, now we have an international. We have Irish on one side and tequila on the other side, so win-win.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this matter? If so, please come forward. Okay. See nobody. And the applicant, I don't think you need a rebuttal. There's not been anything negative said, so you're good there. And go ahead and close the public hearing now, and I would be more than happy to entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion of the council member? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Or is opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Good luck.
Now, go face the state.
Thank you. All right. Our next order of business is C8C. And those of you in the audience, thank you for being patient. I just wanted to move the police officers up. Some of those guys have been working, you know, shifts all day, and just wanted to move them along. At any rate, resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement for the sale of the city property on Sunnyside. And Mr. Greg Pauli, there you go, sir. Will explain. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff. Greg Pauli, Business Relations Manager for the city. I bring before you tonight a packet containing eight different proposals that were submitted in request to our invitation to bid. If I could please get the presentation up on screen? This graphic shows the general location relative to the intersection of 56th and Bush. The property is located on the east side of Sunnyside Road. It's roughly about a block south of Bullard Parkway. Physical address for this area is 202 and 204 Sunnyside Road. These are adjoining side-by-side lots. The... Excuse me. Almost got ahead of myself there. The lots are currently zoned residential 10 and provide for one single family home per lot. You see there the approximate acreage. Each measures out right at a quarter of an acre for a total of half an acre of total space. They are lots 13 and 14 of the Temple Terrace Estates Block C3. I submit to you for consideration that the land has no public purpose or use. This is the street view of the lots. Directly across from the camera position would be Lot 13, and then to the left of screen is Lot 14. They are side-by-side adjoining lots. The city did publish an invitation to bid in early May. We ran the legal notice for two weeks, two consecutive weeks. We also physically posted the site with signage, and we made flyers advertising the site and describing the parcels that were made available, both in print copy as well as online, through our online resources. Both lots were offered to a single buyer. We received a total of eight offers ranging... And these prices that I'm gonna talk about now are for both lots combined, ranging from $55,000 to $110.7,000. The city added a couple of conditions to the bid process, and those are that the buyer would pay reimbursement costs related to surveys and appraisals at $6,000, and the buyer would pay the related title insurance and recording fees. Here before you, you see all eight lots... Or, I'm sorry, all eight bids. They're ranked from highest to lowest. You see the $110.7 at the top with an earnest deposit to the right, and then you can go step-by-step down through that list. While I still have that list on the screen, I'll go ahead and tell you what the next slide talks about. I reached back out to the top five proposers and asked three questions of each of the proposers. I asked them to verify proof of funding in order to support their proposal. I asked them to provide renderings, elevations, artistic sketches of what they would like to develop on those parcels, and I asked them if they possessed the ability to close the sale in a timely manner. Of those top five bidders, this is the first proposer that I'd like to introduce you... Proposal that I'd like to introduce you to tonight. This is from Habitat for Humanity. They have proposed to build approximately 1,300 square homes, one on each of the lots, three-bedroom, two-bathroom, one car on each lot. They would like to include this project or these projects in their Spring of 2020 Women's Build Program comprised of... I'm not sure how many, but I know it's 100 or more local community volunteers. There are representatives here from Habitat Tonight that can speak more to their plans for this property. As with all similar Habitat projects, they also require homeowner equity in excess of 300 hours of sweat equity, and it does meet the Affordable Mortgage Program. Their proposal is $87,000 for both lots, earned deposit of $3,000, closing estimated within 90 days of contract. Their closing is a little bit different than if you or I were to walk up as a cash buyer. Their money... Portions of their money comes from the Hillsborough County Affordable Housing Service Program, and it does require to go through the county approval process. So, even though the closing days are a little more than some of the other ones that I'm gonna discuss, that is why. If requested to do so, the builder has expressed the desire to include upgrades and design elements that would match nearby CRA specifications for the Spanish Renaissance Revival Architecture The next proposal that I would like to show you is from Ahmed Qasim and Basam Ali. You may recognize these names from prior proposals in our CRA area. This proposal is to build residential homes ranging from 1,800 to 2,100 square feet, four-bedroom, two-bathroom, two-car garage with a 30-day closing, and their proposal is $101,000 for both lots with an earnest deposit of $10,000. Mr. Qasim, I believe, is in the audience. The next proposal I have to introduce is from KPS Holdings, Inc. Their proposal is to build two homes, one per lot, ranging from 1,800 to 2,200 square feet, four bedrooms, two baths, two-car garage. They also offer a 30-day closing. Their proposal purchase is $104,000 for both lots, $3,000 earnest deposit, and for the city to pay the title insurance, dock stamps, and recording fees. The next proposal is from Uriel Rivkin, who I do not see in the audience tonight. I did speak with him. He was very much aware that this item would go before you this evening. He proposes to build a 1,655 square feet home on each lot, four bedrooms, two baths, two-car garage, purchase price of $110,000, and a $10,000 deposit with a 30-day closing. Mr. Rivkin, I reached out to him. He did produce proof of finances to purchase the lot, but the documentation that he offered was very near the full purchase price, and I did follow up with him, ask him if he could add supplementary documentation to show that he had funds to actually complete the project. And that was the last conversation I had with him. I never received any additional documentation. The actual top offer that was submitted was withdrawn after the offers were processed, and the gentleman reached out to me. His name is Ali Mansour. He is also known to some of us throughout the community as well. He was very respectful. When he withdrew his offer, he simply needed to direct his funds towards another real estate project that came up between the time he submitted his offer and the time that this comes before you tonight. So, his offer has been withdrawn. As I mentioned earlier, each of the top five were asked to show proof of funds. They all did, with that one small caveat that I just explained. At this point, staff is seeking direction for moving forward with a purchase and sale agreement. And again, I reiterate that we have three of the four in the audience tonight to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Pauli. That concludes your presentation.
Yes, sir. It does. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any... Anybody in the audience this evening that would like to address the council? If so, please come forward.
I'm Tina Swain. I'm the CEO for Habitat for Humanity of Hillsborough County. This is Melissa Crowther. She actually runs our Women Build Program that would be part of this project if we were granted the option to purchase the property. So, Habitat for Humanity, I know you guys probably know of us pretty well, actually. We've had our last three Women Builds here in Temple Terrace. We have put three single mothers in these homes, and we love Temple Terrace for this project in particular, because we see that these families are thriving, and they're doing so much better. And we're all about a hand up, not a handout. And so, what we see is the families that we're serving are able to completely change their lives. And we can only do this because we're able to offer the Affordable Mortgage that Habitat offers, which is 0% interest. So, right now, the homes that we are building have a monthly mortgage payment of about $800, and that includes our taxes and insurance. So, that's why it's affordable, and that's why Habitat can make this work, is because we also act as lender in the program. But I'm gonna ask Melissa to speak just a little bit about Women Build and how Temple Terrace has really kinda taken us in, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Well, for those of you that don't know anything about the Women Build, Women Build is a Habitat for Humanity initiative that focuses specifically on the issues that women and women with children face in trying to find affordable housing. Women are more likely... Excuse me. Women and women with children are more likely to live in substandard and poverty conditions. So, Women Build is about shining a big spotlight on this issue. And along with that, it's also about engaging the community to take concrete steps in coming out to support their community and to make concrete change. So, what we're doing, and, you know, we've done this for the past three years, we support a single mother who is interested in owning her own home. We engage the community in fundraising... We engage the community in fundraising, but also in coming out to build this home with their own two hands. We engage the community in Temple Terrace, but we also bring people from all over Hillsborough County here to help build this home. And the reason why we enjoy doing this is because Temple Terrace is an excellent place for us to place our families. The neighborhoods are wonderful, they're safe, our families are thriving, the single mothers who are living in these homes right now are thriving. And this is the area where we want to continue to build and where we want to place two more single mothers to live and thrive and have their families grow and thrive and be successful in this community. So I'm out of time now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Stats, come forward, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Just wanted to make one little correction. I think we had some confusion on the--
Just give it your name.
Oh, Jamie Stats, KPS Holdings, sorry.
Thank you.
On the closing costs that I think we missed in the office that it was a prerequisite that the city was asking for, we would be willing to take the title insurance, which was, I think, Item B under the city's prerequisite, so it wouldn't be a problem for us to pay that portion of it. A typical standard contract would be buyer pays portion, seller pays a portion, but I did not see that in that part, so we wouldn't have an issue doing it. We've worked here for a long time, a lot of you all have seen our work, so we just like the chance to keep working with the city, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else like to address?
Good evening.
Good evening. Good to see you guys again, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Barbara Whitaker. Been before you guys before for the downtown project as well. Here on behalf of Mr. Ali, I mainly handle his businesses, mainly his VP for his oil company. But he is an avid member of the community. I'm not sure if you all are familiar with Aya. He is a board member of the American Youth Academy, which is based in Temple Terrace. We have a few gas stations that are in Temple Terrace as well and we are really excited about trying to do some additional projects with the city. We are willing to increase our offer if that's what's necessary to get it done. I did provide Mr. Pauli with our proof of funds and we are more than capable of getting it done and getting it done quickly with minimum due diligence to make it happen. If you have any questions, our project, we have a construction manager on staff and we also have Ahmad, who you all see on a regular basis, doing our project management. So we'd be able to get some affordable housing up as well as what our plan is for the two parcels and get those built probably within a six-month period. So if this is about the capabilities and getting the highest and best offer, we're certainly able to do that and we look forward to the opportunity of being able to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Okay, see nobody. We will move on. Council, do you have any questions of the applicants or staff?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Stats.
Mr. Pauli, can you clarify for me a little bit, in a little bit more detail, what was lacking or not turned in by Rabbi Rivkin? You alluded to something, but I didn't quite get the full--
Yes, sir. His proposal was $110,000, I believe. He provided proof of funds at $125,000. I spoke to him. I asked him if he had any supplementary documentation to support financial resources to actually complete the project that he was proposing. Everyone else that I've mentioned before you provided proof of funding well in excess of the purchase price. His proof of funding was just barely more than the purchase price. So I simply asked him to supplement that if he could. And that was a conversation I had with him last Thursday, I believe. It was a telephone conversation.
And what was his response?
He said he would work on it.
Have you had contact with him since then?
No, sir.
So the other applicants provided proof of funding to buy the lots and enough money to build the houses.
Absolutely. The other applicants, their documentation showed more than enough funding to not only make the purchase, but to complete the project in which they were proposing.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Statler.
Yes, I'm not really sure who to direct this to, so, Mr. Pauli. Of the five top proposals, not counting Mansour, what was the relative values of the property after construction was done? Did anybody give any indication?
We do not have that information. I did not collect that information.
Okay. Is there any other comments of staff or the--
I have a comment and I have a question.
We'll have discussion afterwards, but this is just more for--
It just seemed like somebody had an answer to that question.
Yes, I was just going to say that we--
Yeah, you can't, you got to come to, if you want to speak to the question, please come forward. Thank you. Just so the clerk can put on record, don't mean to make you walk.
Barbara Whitaker again. Just to answer your question, council member, we did look into that information. With the property that we proposed to put on there, we would expect the value to be close to 200, somewhere between 225 to 250 once we're done.
Is there any other questions, council members?
Well, I guess my question is, are we going to select A or are we going to rank them or how do you, how do you want us to do this?
Well, I'm going by the guidelines that staff put before us that said, you know, this, we had questions and then the next item is entertain a motion for the lots and obviously there's a first and a second. We can have discussion at that time.
All right. And as your member of the Affordable Housing Board, I think I would be remiss if I did not lean heavily toward the Habitat for Humanity house, only because I can tell you on a personal note, I've recently been on a hunt for housing for my sister who is single and it's almost nonexistent. And knowing, you know, I know that the other homes, I know the work of the other builders, I know your work, I know your work is beautiful, but this particular, this particular cause threw in the brownie points for me. So I'm prepared to make a motion to that effect unless you're ready to have discussion, if you need more discussion.
I have a question before--
There's a motion, we just have to entertain the motion? If there's a second, we can have more discussion?
I have a question, not discussion.
Robert Schwell doesn't, once there's a motion, it has to be a second.
The way with the motion.
She says she was making--
I'm making a motion too.
I thought she said I'm making a motion.
You cut off the question, okay. I got a question for the city manager.
Okay. I will, I will allow your question.
Okay. She withdraws her motion for you to discuss. Go ahead, Ms. Ross.
Well, I know the city manager had some just input about, I got to jump on this question thing faster, I guess, but--
Sorry.
What is the, I know, enlighten me a little bit--
You're assuming I have an answer for you.
Well, I am assuming. In the time that I've been on council, I know there's been several Habitat builds in the city. What I don't know or I'm a little unclear on is, I know we have a goal that we, the city has to provide or should work to provide affordable housing. What I don't know is, how do we make these decisions, particularly with Habitat for Humanity? I mean, in my simplistic mind, it's just what the highest bidder, I mean, that's typically where I go is that's the guy that as long as his offer is the highest bid and everything's intact, that's the one we should take. So how do we, can you have any enlightenment for me about how we make these decisions?
One of the, one of the requirements in our comprehensive plan is to provide affordable housing within our city. We have no other mechanism other than dealing with Habitat for Humanity has got a program that we can suffice with that requirement of the comprehensive plan. I don't know that I can give you any direction other than going with the highest bidder has always been a misnomer. It's not always the best and greatest good of the public. I do think that Habitat has some validity to providing the comp plan and has some better good for the community other than selling it outright to individuals that sell it for profit. That being said, we're just looking for direction. We don't, we don't have any suggestion to you. I don't know that I can give you any guidance other than making a good judgment call on who you would like me to entertain executing a contract with, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schwell. Thank you, Ms. Knowle.
May I make my motion?
Yes, ma'am. Go for it.
And I move to approve the sale of the property to Habitat for Humanity.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second to back that motion? Okay. There's a second. We're open for discussion now, council members. Is there any discussion?
This is one of those no wins. I mean, I love Habitat for Humanity, I really do. I've worked on your houses. What you do is wonderful. I've swung hammers for you before, but I just feel a fiduciary responsibility to the constituents of the city to get the most that we can get. So please don't take my negativity towards this particular purchase to mean that I don't like Habitat or I don't like, you know, don't want to provide affordable housing. I just, I feel a duty when I run into people at Publix to say, you could have gotten $23,000 more for that property. What were you thinking? And so I love you, but I can't go with you on this one.
Okay. Is there any other comments or questions on this item? Okay. I don't see any. I will have, I'll say a couple of things. I certainly think Habitat for Humanity is a great cause. Certainly the city has done some progress with them in the past. And I've looked at some of the other applicants. Mr. Ross made a very good point. In particular, one of the proposals is a company that's been in this community for a very long time and has revitalized probably more homes than anybody in our city. They've taken old dilapidated homes and it's certainly a home that I would appreciate across the street or next to my house and we need a balance. We certainly have affordable housing in Temple Terrace. We have actually quite a bit of it and we certainly need to continue to enhance our values in Temple Terrace as the city continues to age. Sometimes the values continue to decline. And of the renderings that were shown, even the, based on the elevations, I could see a very clear difference in the proposals that were from the KPS Holdings. It was a, it seemed from the renderings as a nicer product and they've done these throughout the city, not one or two, but I'm talking hundreds. So to me, it's not really so much the price, it's also the product and what you get for the product and to have and find a balance. And I can't, I won't support the motion for the reasons that I just stated, but my support would be behind the KPS Holdings based on the track record and the proven track record that they've made throughout our cities for decades, not for one or two years, but for decades. They've developed subdivisions, they've developed homes, you know, they, and it's a very nice product. So that's my position, but that's how my vote will go. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Statler.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I don't quibble with the product that some of the renderings have shown. I think that they would be very nice products and very nice homes. But I think, and I've seen what Habitat for Humanity has done and I've always supported those, that organization and that operation as best I could throughout my career. I just think that, I was at the dedication over on 19, was it 50--
17.
51st Street. And the impact that I think that that made on the family and the community and around it was quite, quite humbling and I think that we can do that again. So again, it's a no-win situation. Somebody's going to be unhappy and I just feel that this is the right thing to do in this particular case.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Statler. We'll go ahead and, if there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of having the city manager negotiate the contract with Habitat for Humanity, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
So the motion passes three to two. Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on. Yeah. Okay. Sergeant. Okay. Our next item is approving the St. Augustine Live Oak Water Main Replacement Project Phase One and our Public Works, Public Works Director, Mr. Troy Tinch will explain. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and City Council. If you'll note, the next two items are actually items that I'm bringing forward and I'm very pleased to tell you that both of those items are construction projects. So we're finally starting to see some of the fruits of our labor through the design efforts that you guys were so gracious to approve and we're moving forward with that. So it pleases me to continue with the process to bring these projects such as the St. Augustine Project forward because it is that, it's showing that we're making movement within the department. So thank you, thank you for that. That said, to discuss the item that is currently being brought forward, the St. Augustine Live Oak Water Main Replacement Project, the city initially advertised this in May of this year. We received five competitive bids for this project. Of the five bids, we selected Harris McBurney as the lowest competitive bid. They actually came in quite a bit below what we had budgeted for the project and they were the lowest responsive bidder, so that of course is the group that we're hoping to move forward with. The project itself, as indicated by the Vice Mayor, this is a phase project, it's Phase One of a three-phase project. Ultimately, we'll be continuing to replace water mains that are currently within backyard easements. We're going to bring those water mains forward to the front for ease of maintenance as we move forward and that's the whole intent of this project. If the city clerk can pull up the map, you'll have a little better idea of what that looks like. So currently, the area that we're going to be working within is kind of the Riverside Drive, Sunny Side Road, Live Oak Avenue, Ben Oaks, Glen Oaks Avenue area. It will affect 43 residents and again, it will be moving that and abandoning the existing water line and moving that to the front of the property so that when we have future issues with those lines, we can easily maintain them. As part of this project, it will also include the plumbing that will be involved to install the new meter and then plum back to the existing connection to the water service. So if the water service is currently on the backside of the property, on the back of the home, which you would anticipate or potentially on the side, we would be plumbing to that point. So everything is encompassed in one fell swoop and we anticipate about a nine-month work window on that and obviously, we would not have issues with people being without water. That process would be handled very quickly to switch folks over. We're looking at about 2,700 linear feet of new six-inch water line, which will not only provide a better fire protection service for that community, but also better water pressure within that community itself. So that in itself is a life safety effect. And that said, staff recommends the city council approve this resolution for construction of Phase One of the St. Augustine Live Oaks Water Main Improvement Project awarded to Harris McBurney Company in the amount of $511,803.25, which has been appropriated under account number 410-1922-535.63-32. I will stand for questions if any.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch. Is there any public comment on this item? If so, please come forward. Okay. I see none. Council members, entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution.
Motion?
Can you have a question first?
After, that's how the instructions are. I'm following, I'm following my instructions.
Second.
Motion, the second. Now, Mr. Statler, discussion.
Just question, what did we have appropriated in the budget for the-- Just question. What did we have appropriated in the budget for this under CIT?
Six hundred.
Or, I'm sorry.
Six fifty? Six hundred ninety thousand.
Okay.
Six hundred ninety?
Yeah.
We've got enough money to cover.
Yeah.
I have a question, too. Let me make sure I understood. So the 43 homes that currently have their water connection in the back?
Yes.
The city's going to pay the cost of going up to their house?
Correct.
Across their property?
Yes.
So I thought it was always from the water meter to your house was your responsibility.
Right. Once the installation occurs, there'll be a one-year, we actually have to work a little bit within the confines of that. So there will be a plumber hired to actually make that connection, but it will be paid for by the city through this contract.
Is that typically how this is done? Is this the industry?
Yes. That's typically how that will be handled.
What happens if the plumber's digging around there and breaks something or collapses, you know, who knows?
There will be right-of-use permits, or not right-of-use permit, a... Sorry.
Sorry.
I'm going to call forward the engineer who actually helped design the project. Maybe he could address that maybe a little better, better.
Vice Mayor Commission, my name's David Wheeler. I'm with CPH Incorporated. I'm the engineer that designed this job. Answer your question, Mr. Ross. Typically, in a brand-new house, if you were building the house, yes, you would be responsible from the property line to the house. In this instance, the service is already there. The city's pipelines are in the back. The city is taking endeavor to move that stuff to the front of the property. Therefore, it looks at as the expense of the city to run the service lines. The contractor breaks anything, similar to if he's out working in a right-of-way, he breaks something he's not supposed to. It's his responsibility to fix it at his cost, not at the city cost.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Is there a motion, a second, or discussion? Is there any other discussion? Nope. See none. All right. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along. Public Works Director, Mr. Troy Tinch is up again, and this time we're authorizing the execution of an agreement with Asphalt Paving Systems.
So as part of our annual transportation improvement program, our pavement management plan, we allocate funds for resurfacing of roadways within the city. This year, we've selected a number of roadways throughout the city that are in bad need of repair, either through full-death reclamation, mill and resurface, or even micro-resurfacing. If I could get Cheryl to please pull up that map. All in total, we're looking at resurfacing a little over two miles of roadways. As you scroll down, going from the south to the north, you'll notice that the first road on that is Shadow Lane. I've been told by staff on numerous occasions, as well as I agree myself, this is probably the worst road within the city. Those of you that have traversed that roadway know just how bad it is. As you move, so that road will actually be FDR'd. And in the past, I've kind of described the three different methodologies FDRs, where they actually grind up the upper eight inches of asphalt and road base and mix it with an emulsion concrete that provides a very sturdy base. They go back in after that effect and resurface with about an inch to an inch and a half of driving surface. Makes a really nice product. The other area to be influenced in that area would be mill and overlay, which is another more traditional methodology where they go in and literally grind down about an inch and a half of the existing asphalt and then overlay it with a new inch and a half of asphalt. You conduct that type of activity on a roadway that has a good, solid base, and we feel that that greenfield beats that need. In addition, as you traverse more towards the north, you'll see Sunnyside Road and Ridgedale Road. That's really more intersection improvements through the micro-surfacing process. Again, those of you that have driven those intersections know they're quite rough. So we're going to kind of finish that out, out to the counties right-of-way, so make for a little smoother surface within that area. Again, the micro-resurfacing is an asphaltic-type material, about half an inch in thickness. Does a really nice job of kind of smoothing out areas that are roughly handled. So again, moving on from that point, you have Glen Arvin Avenue. That will be FDR'd from Bullard Parkway up to the cul-de-sac. If you recall, last year, we did a project from the cul-de-sac north, so that will kind of match up with that on Glen Arvin. In addition, we have Ben Avon, Vanik Burn, Kirkside, Glen Burney, and Sleepy Hollow. Those areas are also fairly bad condition, so we'll be looking to complete that FDR treatment within there. Next, we have White Way. This is a project we want to get moving quite quickly. Obviously, that's right in front of the middle school, so we want to, we're proposing a double micro-surface in there to kind of smooth out that area and to give us a nice driving surface. And then finally, the intersection at North River Hills Drive and Fowler Avenue. Those of you that have driven that know how badly it's rutted as you turn off of Fowler Avenue. So we're looking to approve that again with double micro. That particular area will eventually be redone by FDOT. So we didn't want to spend a lot of money on a resurfacing effort within that location, knowing that it will be soon ripped up basically, and a new surface put down when DOT redoes that intersection, and I think 2021. So that said, staff recommends the city council approve this resolution authorizing the use of a piggyback agreement between Lee County and Asphalt Paving Systems for roadway resurfacing efforts within the city of Temple Terrace in an amount not to exceed $648,524.32 appropriated under account number 130-1724-541.63-11. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch. At this time, is there anybody in the public that would like to address this council? So please come forward. Okay, see nobody coming forward. Council members, any questions? Now the instructions ask me to ask questions. I don't know what they're doing. I think they're playing with me.
I'm not saying a word, Mr. Ross. You get to do it all.
Try here. I'm black and white. Okay, any questions, council members?
You know my question. How much was it? How much did we originally approve for this?
We had a little over, we had $650,000 appropriated for this effort, so we came in. I prefer to spend every penny, so this is about as close as we could get.
I have a question, but not about this project. There's another road close to one of those, Burlingame, between Woodmont and Bullard. It's pretty bad. I don't, I'm, just somewhere down the road, I'd like to know where that is on our list.
Absolutely. One of the things that I'm looking to accomplish before the end of the fiscal year is to have our pavement management plan updated. And when that happens, councilman, it will actually rank all the roadways within the city, and it will give a ranking to that particular roadway surface, and then it will place it in a five-year plan, and we can tell you definitively when that will be resurfaced.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, see none. And I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
So motion by Mr. Schisler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chambers. Any further discussion or comments by council members? See none? We'll call the question. All those in favor signify by?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is renewal of Microsoft Office 365 license, and Ms. Sally Cabrera, our senior information technology specialist, will explain. Good evening.
Hello, Vice Mayor, Council. Sally Cabrera, Senior IT, City of Temple Terrace. We, staff recommends council approval for the purchase of our Office 365 licensing renewal. The annual cost for all licenses, maintenance, and support is $52,666.78. The annual contract period is from September 1st, 2019, through August 31st, 2020. Purchases will be made through Softwarehouse International based on pricing from Florida State Contract 432-30000-15-02. These funds are fully budgeted in the 2018-2019 IT Department budget from account 001-1121-513-3428. Any questions?
Thank you. We will ask for any public comment at this time. If there's any, please come forward. I see none. Council members, do you have any questions? I see none. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the purchase.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, and last but not least, this is a resolution to approve SPR 19-04, final site plan for downtown Temple Terrace Apartments, Block 2, Lot 1-35. I will ask our city clerk to please swear in any persons who will testify.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I'll be gone?
Okay, thank you. And also, we'll ask for Ex parte communications. Ms. Donahue?
I've had none.
I've had none?
I've had none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
Okay. And with that, our senior planner, Ms. Marion Abrahamson, will present. Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm here to present, as you know, downtown Temple Terrace Apartments Site Plan, SPR 1904. The applicant is Richmond Group of Florida. The applicant's agent is Michael Horner, and the engineer on this project is Hamilton Engineering. This project is located on the southeast corner of Bullard Parkway and Main Street in the downtown redevelopment area. The land is currently vacant. The proposed use is a four-story, 200-unit apartment complex with a clubhouse, outdoor recreation space, and a pool on approximately 4.86 acres. This is the site plan. I know it's a little bit busy in that part of the view, so here is, zoom in on the two buildings with the clubhouse and the pool area and the recreational space and the parking, of course. So here are the elevations. The first one will be facing Main Street. This is looking west from Main Street. You have the two buildings on either side of the clubhouse. The bottom two photos are those same buildings, but this, the one to your left is the north elevation facing Bullard Parkway, and the one on the right is the south elevation facing the Wind Dixie Plaza. Here is a close-up of the buildings that are facing Main Street. It's the same image as you saw the first image on the previous slide. These are just a little bit closer up, so you can see a little bit more detail. These are the proposed elevations for the clubhouse, the rear and the front elevations. The clubhouse is proposed to be approximately 6,600 square feet. The applicant is proposing to construct a wall along Bullard Parkway, along their northern property line. It'll be approximately 170 feet in length, not to exceed six feet. There are two conditions of approval associated with this site plan. One is coordination with FDOT regarding any additional transportation improvements that might be required through the Florida Department of Transportation. The second are improvements on B Street. As you know, the neighboring property is undergoing site plan review now, and the applicant has stated that they are willing to make modifications to B Street dependent on the final approval for the commercial developments to the west. The Development Review Committee of the city has no outstanding objections to the proposed site plan, and therefore, staff recommends that council approve the resolution for this site plan with the conditions of approval.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here and does he or she wish to make a presentation? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here, finally. My name is Michael Horner, 14502 North Dale Mary Highway, Tampa, Florida, 33618. Representing the Richmond Group of Florida. With me is Ely Banks of the Richmond Group. First, let me just say thank you to staff, Marianne, administration, department heads. It's been fairly seamless. This was not an easy project to coordinate, and we're thankful for their professionalism. We've gone through a couple resubmittals, dotted the i's, crossed the t's, and we're thankful that finally we're here before you for a final approval of our site plan. This is market-rate apartments, something you guys have been looking for for years. There was a lot of pie-in-the-sky discussion years ago, my clients, about building bricks and mortar, getting this thing constructed. So I think this is an important cog in this wheel of redevelopment, the downtown development overlay district. These will be two buildings, as Marianne indicated. Again, 200 units, four stories, amenities, clubhouse package. We've agreed to a number of concessions that we think make this a better project. I think the elevations speak for themselves. Our architects did a heck of a job. So I'm not going to have a detailed PowerPoint. You've had a long night. We're ready to get this thing underway, and we thank you for your efforts. Look forward to getting this built. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council, do you have any questions of the applicant or staff?
You know I do.
Mr. Ross?
Go figure, right? Or is, I know Richmond has several lines of rental communities. I remember that from the original proposal. Is this the same line that we saw at the original proposal? This is the same? Nothing's changed?
It's correct.
Okay.
Minor changes, the elevations, but it's essentially the same.
Because I remember we were told we were insulting to even call these apartments, and now I see that you're calling them apartments in your own documentation. So, okay, we can call them apartments.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Schisler?
As I remember, as these, as the site plan were developed, there was a significant number of changes that had to be made. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. As these site plans were being developed, I remember discussion, I wasn't on the DS at that time, regarding significant changes that needed to be made to the frontage out onto 56th Street via Main, on the other side of Main Street with parking and so forth. Has, I didn't see much in here with regards to that. You know, trying to accommodate the existing elevation of the decor of the yard, for lack of a better word.
That's the Western B Street.
Yeah.
Right. Has, has everything been met according to, have all the changes been met according to what staff was looking for?
We believe so.
I believe so, councilman. We continue to coordinate. Of course, we're only one part of this redevelopment effort. We're working hand-in-hand with the developers of the commercial component, which is critical. So that Western B Street is an important interface for our parking, our maneuvering. We looked at some rotary designs, backed off that because of traffic circulation issues, but we're on top of that. We're working with both parties as well, the city of Temple Terrace.
Part of the conversation that we've had, you know, we were approached with changing the park situation. We have allowed Richmond to submit a site plan that really gets rid of the park and increases the curb appearance of the clubhouse. Along with that, they've agreed to, excuse me, they've agreed to take some of the features that are currently in the park setting, such as the columns and the trellises, so on and so forth, and incorporate them into B Street. We're, yeah, we're still working on that. We are, in fact, trying to do a joint effort between the Material Group, who's purchased that new piece of property there in front along 56, and the Paragon, so that we have a unified development, so that all the developments are working together rather than individually to help improve. They all have access to B Street. B Street will end up being retained by the city as a city right-of-way, but we will control the development that happens along B Street, and we'll do it jointly with all three developers so that we have, again, a unified development coming in there.
And if I may just add, we've maintained our commitment from day one on trying to incorporate those design elements, park features. It's critical, we think, to maintain that continuity. So we don't have a detailed final plan for those improvements, but we're willing to work with the city on that.
Well, I had seen some preliminary work and drawings, and they really look good, and I just want to make sure that they were maintained in through this final structure.
The integrity of those drawings is still on the table.
Thank you. Is there any other questions of the applicant or staff? Okay, I see none. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address council on this item? If so, come forward. See nobody. The applicant is here. For any rebuttals, I think you've just answered a couple of questions.
I'm happy to wave rebuttal.
Anything else you need to add or?
I don't think so. Thank you so much for your time, council.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, council members, if acceptable, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd be happy to joyfully move.
I'd be happy to joyfully move the approval of this project.
Thank you.
Second?
There's a motion, a second. I just have one question. Um, I, I just speak with Mr. Stevens today. I believe this project's slated to close Thursday. Is that accurate?
Uh, this project is slated to close, uh, on the seventeenth, if I'm not mistaken, but we have to make those arrangements. It may be next week, but, um, it was, it was targeted to close the middle of July. Um, now that we've got this site plan approved, uh, I know that we're willing to move forward with this closing. Uh, that closing will put another three million dollars into our coffers.
Okay, well, we, but the, the contract had, uh, dates on it, that's why I was asking. There should be a date associated with it.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what that date is, but we're, uh, in my conversation with, uh, um, uh, Mr. Ely, I, we're, we're prepared to get this thing closed, um, as quickly as we can. I, we have not, we haven't been sitting on this.
He has the answer.
Hi. Um, not ex, I don't have the contract in front of me. Ely Banks?
Yes, sir.
Richmond Group. Um, I don't have the exact dates in front of me. I know that we, the closing was tied to the government approval period. Pam probably knows this better than me right now, but, um, and the government approval period was pushed because of this meeting, um, because we weren't going to be able to meet it in time. So I know we extended that, uh, and I know the closing is predicated upon, uh, the expiration of the government approval period. So we'll need to look at it. It's imminent, um, but, but it's not next week, uh, I don't think. I, I think it was thirty days from the expiration of the government approval period. So we can look at the contracts, um, but that's the answer to the question off the top of my head.
Just want to shed a little light on that, sir.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I like your answer better.
Well, we'll check into it. Again, I don't, I don't know. At this point in time, we're, we're six months, eight months into this project. We'll, we'll get it closed.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, is there any, did you, Mr. Schuster?
Yeah, um, I know that this is one of the hottest topics of all of our residents, having been through the campaign, uh, the last year, that was the biggest issue that everybody was wanting to do. So I want to say thank you to, to the Richmond Group for keep working and, and keep plugging away at this, and to staff, and to the city attorney, and to city manager for finally bringing this to fruition. I think, to me, the one, um, I guess for lack of a better, sad point is that you couldn't make the motion. You've been up here longest dealing with this issue, and I think you would have probably been better making the motion for this than what it was, but I support it, and I look forward to getting it, getting the rest of this done, and when are we going to turn some dirt?
As soon as possible. We're ready. We have to close first. I might also add, we're paying almost a million dollars in impact fees, additional ad valorem revenue from forthcoming, year four on, about four hundred ninety-five, five hundred thousand dollars a year, so right now you're getting zero, so I think this is a win-win for the entire community.
That's fantastic, and certainly it's exciting. Um, I think once this goes, there's going to be lots of things that come behind it.
Yeah.
Uh, once you bring in, you know, the, the folks, then the commercial development have the confidence, and, uh, I'm just disappointed that this room's not full of people, because everybody talks about redevelopment, and here's redevelopment, and there's like two citizens.
There's a cheering squad back there.
Sitting in the back of the room. So, uh, we are very excited about redevelopment of Temple Terrace, and, uh, as Mr. Schuster had indicated, I commend, um, staff. Um, I know our city manager worked hard on it, our city attorney, and, uh, the developer as well, for, you know, working with us and trying to present a very desirable, desirable project, and I know you won't disappoint us. Your project downtown, we toured, was very impressive, and if it's anything like that, it certainly will, uh, set the standards very high, so look forward to having you in Temple Terrace.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Supposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Hopefully that'll make the headlines of the.
Welcome to Temple Terrace.
Thank you. We'll see if the newspaper's right about that. It's a positive thing. So, thank you.
So now you're now Temple Terrace sites.
We are moving on to council business. Is there any council business to come before us this evening? Mr. Schuster?
I'd like to bring up, I'd like to bring up one item, um, and I'm not really sure how we, we go about doing this, but as we discussed with the, uh, west coast brace of limb issue, is there a way we can establish a commercial buffer zone around the existing commercial, I mean, excuse me, the existing residential neighborhoods, you know, along the, along the main corridors, fifty-sixth Street and Bullard Parkway and, and, and Fowler Avenue, so that we don't encroach, and so that, and so that we, we have a legal standing to work towards preventing any kind of commercial encroachment? I'm not sure what that would take, but if, if, um, you could look into that, that would, I think, would help the, I know would help me in, in, in moving forward with this and answering constituent questions. We, we could certainly look at that. We'll, um, we'll get with the planning commission. A lot of that's dictated by the land use issues, so I, we, we can, um, look at our corridors and the land use, the land use issues, um, and kind of maybe give you a report back as far as our major corridors. And no is a complete stand sentence, so, you know, it's.
Yeah. Thank you.
I mean, rezonings, obviously, is a process that people have the ability to go into, and that, that's what you dealt with as far as, um, tooth and, tooth and foot, so, um, I, I understand the, the, the situation that it puts council in, but it is a valid process that, um, we have to go through, and we have to allow people to follow that if in fact it's consistent with land uses, so. We'll, we'll, we'll look at it. We'll kind of give you some kind of report back.
Super. Any other business? Um, I just have one item I want to address, and, um, it's more personal than anything, and, um, a couple of weeks ago, we had a need for the paramedics to come to our house, and I tell you, I couldn't, I can't even begin to tell you how amazing those guys were. They were, I mean, we all know this, but they were so professional. My dad needed help, and they were like, right there. They made him feel very comfortable. They took him to the hospital. Um, very personable. It wasn't just like another patient. Um, and then I had knee surgery four days later, and I wasn't feeling good, and they came out and, you know, they took me to the hospital. I've never even been in ambulance, and they were just awesome. I just can't say enough, chief, you guys do a great job. I mean, we always say it, but, um, I, I just wanted to personally say it meant a lot that you guys really went above and beyond, so thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other council business? See?
Well, are we new business or council?
No, council business. All right, new business and board of commissioners. Mr. Ross?
Two, two things real quick. Um, one is, I'd asked a couple of months ago for a brief update on the status of the country club. I'm glad you didn't do it tonight, 'cause we're here too long, but is that coming soon?
Uh, we have, again, requested we met with the country club. The SAC committee met with the country club last week. Uh, we've asked them to come to council and give, give an update.
Well, I don't want an update from them. I want an update from you.
Oh.
Um, I just want to know, are they up on their bills? Are they paying, or they?
They are current, they are in fact current on their bills.
Okay, I mean, they're welcome, but I want to hear from you guys.
They are. We met last week, and, uh, we had been reviewing financial situation, uh, financials, um, financials from them over the course of the last month, and A, they're current.
Good.
And B, their books match our books, as far as that's concerned, which is, which is something that had happened a long time.
Yeah.
So, uh, they're, they're paying their bills.
Okay, well, scratch my question. You just answered it.
Well, we, we, again, we have asked them to come in and do a status update.
That's fine.
They, and, and, and they say they're going to accommodate us. I don't know when that is. I don't know that's scheduled, um, but we asked them occasionally to come in and just kind of give us a briefing.
That's fine. I'd love to hear from them, but what I really wanted to hear was what I just heard.
They are in fact current.
The other thing, um, and maybe you're going to talk about it in your report, where are we with Paragon? Is he ever going to build anything?
Um, yes. He's moving like a turtle, but he is moving. We're trying to kind of prod him every once in a while. We do have a site plan that was just submitted last week, um, a revised, the second submittal on site plan. Um, I think this week, uh, comments are due back to them, so we'll be getting comments back to him. Um, he does still have on his site plan the Chase Bank at the corner. We're still trying to work out some of the details about the fountain and the tower at the corner, um, but, um, Starbucks is still on his plan, um, and we're moving forward, hopefully, with the approval of the two-hundred homes.
Tonight, they're probably signing the contract.
You know, this, this ought to give him a, a, a pretty good kick on the rest of the economic, uh, impact that those two-hundred homes can have down there, so. Um, we're, we're continuing to get stuff from him, and we're trying to prod him along, and he's moving fairly slow. Uh, the Matera Group, we're still working on a contract with him. He's been out of town for the last month, so, uh, we're moving forward. Uh, the Sing Group, we're waiting to get some exhibits from him, so that we can attach it to a contract on the area B, and we really can't, um, I mean, I don't want to start negotiating contract with him unless I know what he's going to build, or what he's proposing to build, so. That's kind of a real quick synopsis of redevelopment, but I, I, I would like to take the opportunity to welcome Richmond. I think, um, they've been great to work with, uh, they've been fairly accommodating with our request, and, um, I, I'm really looking to turn it some dirt. I talked with Mr. Banks, uh, before the meeting about doing a groundbreaking and, uh, and certainly ribbon-cutting. They're all in with this, and, uh, I'm excited to get some stuff built after all these years, so. Looking forward to it.
Mr. Stevens, now that, you know, you're talking about that, is it, is it, um, appropriate that a deadline be put on the Terra Group, because this has been, we approved this over a month ago, and there's nothing in place here, not a contract or anything. You got, we got a little, little fire. We're the ones holding the mortgage, we're the ones paying for it, and they're just buying time, 'cause you just can't go out and, and solicit that property to anybody, but he can walk away tomorrow, 'cause he didn't have any, any commitments whatsoever. So that property's locked up right now. If he really wants it, you can get it done well within the timeline that has been, you know, provided. So I would, you know, my suggestion is that council consider maybe giving staff a, a, a timeline, say, hey, you need to start negotiations and maybe have something within, you know, twenty days or whatever, that, something reasonable, but this is already gone a long time, and the folks on the corner, it's on their dime.
Right.
You know, they're paying the dues on it. We want to see something happen. Approving these apartments tonight, now they have a, a mechanism to say, hey, we have two-hundred homes going here.
But the other guys are on our dime.
Right, that, that's the point, 'cause it's been, well, you know, over a month now, and.
Well, in, in all honesty, Mr. Teller, uh, you, you know it takes a long time to put these deals together.
I do, I do. But you say you're on vacation, and.
Well, you know, people go out into the country. I mean, I, I, we, we do have a draft agreement that is, um, that is sitting on my desk, that, um, I need to review. We need to get some comments back to our city attorney, so that we can kind of clean this thing up. I know there was some concern about, um, um, him basing a closing on a site plan approval and the delays that it can occur. We're trying to, we're trying to work all that out, so. We're bringing a contract. I'm confident that we can bring you a contract.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I mean, I, I don't know, I wish you wouldn't put some kind of deadline on it, because it takes time to have conversations and.
No, I get it, I mean, I, that's what I do, but this seems like it's just taking, I'm not faulting you, sometimes it's little tactics that the developers use to buy time to, it's on our dime, so they take, you know, a little extra.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll put a little bit more attention on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, um, is there any other new business, or?
I have a couple. I'll be attending the Florida League of Cities Policy Advocacy Meeting this Friday, and I sent the city manager a long list of things that we've kind of talked about in the past. I didn't know if anybody had anything, or if we had worked out any, um, new methods or new ordinances toward short-term rentals or anything like that. That's a hot topic.
Uh, that's funny you ask. We just resurrected that ordinance that we brought before you and kind of put on hold until the state did their thing.
Uh-huh.
Uh, we will be bringing that to you here shortly.
Okay.
Um, that is one of those things that was on the list. I have not had a chance to share with the rest of council that list.
Right.
Um, but my response to you was yes, every single one of them.
Yes, it was a yes, all of the above. It was about nine items.
We have dealt with each one of those topics, um, continuously in the last two, two and a half years.
Okay.
If not longer, so, um, to answer your question, any information that you can bring back to help us with those topics would be helpful.
Okay.
Um, I will share that list with council, the rest of council tomorrow.
Okay.
So that they can.
Thank you.
Kind of provide us some feedback on.
Then, I have another question that's been asked of me outright, but it's been asked of all of us. Can you tell us what's going on on Temple Terrace Highway with all those trees coming down?
Yes. Um, for some of you that have ever driven out Temple Terrace Highway after about a three or four-inch rain, you know that road goes completely underwater.
Lake Temple Terrace Highway?
It's pretty bad. Um, the county had initiated years ago a, a, um, a project that they've now initiated getting construction underway. Uh, there is actually a, uh, mechanism to get that water out of that drainage easement, the TCO easement, that's where it all goes. Problem is, is TCO easements half underwater half the time anyway. It doesn't hold any additional water. Their plan is to pump it back up Seventy-Eighth Street to the west and take it down, I'm sorry, up Temple Terrace Highway to Seventy-Eighth Street, pump it north on Seventy-Eighth Street and dump it the same place that we emptied the Seventy-Eighth Street Pond into, which is the Riverfront Preserve. That's the, that's the plan. In order to do that, all those trees had to come out, because a lot, the, the road goes, I know, I, I freaked out as well. Um, we are working to get from the county a replacement, uh, plan for, for trees, so we're currently just waiting, we're still waiting for that to come in.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and as soon as that comes in, we'll, we'll kind of give you a little bit more information about, they do have a replacement plan, but unfortunately, those trees had to come out.
Yeah.
To get this, to get this project done.
And, and I'm not trying to beleaguer the meeting, make it last any longer, but we used to have, the, I guess it was the EDC, they would come to us, was it Economic Development? They would come to us occasionally and say, you know, we can't tell you who the business is, but they are interested in coming to Temple Terrace. They're going to bring X number of jobs and construction and what have you, and we would agree to certain, act, you know, certain things. We would cut them a deal on whatever, that's not a good word to use in a city council meeting, cut them a deal, but you know what I mean? We would make some incentive, we would offer them some incentives. Are we not working with them anymore, or they just haven't?
We are continuing to work with them. Uh, some of the businesses that they would bring in would come to us with some tax incentives, what it was, qualified, uh, tax incentives that, um, the county would have worked with us on as far as.
Okay.
County would pay part of it, we would pay part of it. I don't know that we've had any proposals come in here lately, um, on any new development. Greg, uh, Mr. Pauly has direct conversation with them nowadays. Maybe you can share some.
I actually spoke with them just last week. Um, I'm not at liberty to share too many details, because that hasn't been finalized, but I do stay in communication with them, and, uh, there is a, um, potential business expansion on the horizon for us that I'm working directly with them on.
Well, I know, uh, someone approached me and were interested in Temple Terrace, and they said, what, what kind of a deal can you make? I said, I can't make any deals, and I sent it to Mr. Pauly. So I didn't know if, if that type of thing, do we have to go through the EDC, or can we So I didn't know if that type of thing, do we have to go through the EDC or can we make our own arrangements if someone comes to us and says, hey, I, I want to open up a business that brings 50 employees and...
Yes, the referral that you sent over to me, I reached back to that person, that person that in turn connected me to a principal in the company. I reached out to that person and I have not heard back from that person as of yet.
So, so the answer is this is something we can do?
We can do. The EDC helps us with some potential expansion. They're more of a clearinghouse for people that want to relocate and expand and grow their businesses throughout the entire Tampa Bay area. But we are also very much open to folks bringing stuff directly to us because at the end of the day, I would then come before you.
Right.
And let you consider whatever they, they have presented to us.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I think the mayor and the city manager, they do meet with the EDC, but keep in mind, we cut their funding substantially, so that makes a little...
They may not be coming to see us as often.
That certainly has an impact, too. I sat, I sat on that board for a while, so you cut their, well, we cut their funding quite a bit. So it went from $25,000 to very minimal now, so...
That shouldn't, that shouldn't disqualify us from projects.
It shouldn't, but...
It shouldn't, but there seems to be a correlation there.
The problem, the problem with EDC is EDC doesn't work on small businesses that we can hold. The Amazons and the Googles aren't going to come to Temple Terrace. We don't have the ability to even house those kind of, those kind of businesses. The EDC primarily concentrates their efforts on, in fact, those type of businesses.
Well, I'm glad you think we can do that.
I would hope, I would hope that the EDC is not disqualifying us. We still give them a substantial amount of money and we are still a partner in that corporation.
I don't think they consider that substantial.
Well, you know...
You can't buy a 72 pickup truck with that.
All right, let's move the meeting along. It's getting late.
I have way too much...
All right, so new business board reports, we're, oh, Mr. Shishar, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I had two more questions. Mr. Shishar, could you give us a 90-second update on the transit tax? And then, Mr. Stevenson, are you going to bring fireworks in your, in your discussion?
Are you going to what?
Bring up fireworks?
Fireworks.
The 4th of July fireworks?
We're going to bring up fireworks.
Okay.
See, and you thought it was going to be me? You thought it was going to be me?
Okay.
The, as you already know, the transit tax case, the order that was issued by the judge upheld the tax itself, but struck certain portions of the referendum question that dealt with the powers of the, I think it's IOC. So however, the IOC is going to be meeting very soon and if you're interested in attending that meeting, I can let you know when it is. It's sort of an informational session that they're going to be having. I'm not aware that anybody, any of the main players are planning on appealing the decision. There was a submittal to the judge for an amended final judgment and I haven't seen that that was signed yet, but it was more or less housekeeping matters that all the parties more or less agreed to. And that's where it stands. So the monies will still be, taxes will still go on and the monies will be collected. The county has to make the decision as to what the distribution is as opposed to, and they may, and they may support what was originally in the charter amendment. So it could be exactly the way it was, except for the powers of the IOC may not be as great.
Okay. Any further new business or reports? Thank you. All right, city manager report, Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Let's, if I can, just talk about fireworks and kind of give you a status on the fireworks. And I know there's a lot of displeased citizens out there. I can tell you this, that there's nobody more upset about the arrangement of fireworks than our staff and certainly your city manager. We went through a, an agreement with a company that we thought was going to be reputable. We worked diligently on a contract that addressed a lot of issues that we've had in the past. We ran across some things on last Thursday that were beyond our control. We apologize for that. I guess you can say city manager kind of dropped the ball and I will take full responsibility for this. We thought we had a pretty good contract. We had the setup crew show up. They were supposed to be ready by four o'clock. They were in fact ready by four o'clock. Problem is, is the product, being the fireworks themselves, were not in, not in transit as of yet. They ended up showing up about eight o'clock at night, thus the delay in getting the fireworks off. I know the crew that was there, there was three or four of them. Carl even helped load fireworks. I was out there helping clean up garbage and trash and boxes. We did in fact suspect that we had a shortage of fireworks when they were loading the fireworks, to what extent we didn't know, but we did keep all the boxes. We took an inventory. We know what we were shorted. Our agreement with this company actually delineated exactly how many fireworks were to be shot. Now, that being said, there's no excuse for them showing up with half, but their, their late delivery of the fireworks and certainly not, and their method of delivery was kind of questionable as well. We ended up with half a show. So I haven't broken that news. I think I broke that news to you, you guys, in an email last week, just to kind of give you a heads up of the situation that we were dealing with. I apologize to the public. It was really beyond our control, but I will take full responsibility and we'll try to make sure we do something different next year. We seem to have this problem every single year with...
Just recently.
Huh?
Just recently.
Just recently.
Used to shoot them off at a barge.
The conversation that you shared with me today, Ms. Donahue, was that there were a couple of other cities that did the same, had the same problem.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, we're dealing with a situation that we're going to have to find a different way of doing this and we will. We'll try to fix this problem going forward.
Maybe my neighbor can help. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Learning what we found out this time, we're going to do things a little differently. So again, that's, I apologize for all the confusion, but it was really beyond our staff's control. I know that Carl just about got an ulcer out of the whole thing, but we made it through it. We'll fix the problem.
Mr. Stevenson, what?
We have, we have been able to, as of today or yesterday, I'm sorry, we've got some resolution to this. I didn't want to share a lot of this until we had some resolution and conversation with this company to get this thing resolved, so...
Did we pay them?
We have paid them. We paid them upfront.
How much did we pay them?
We paid them $20,000 to run that, run that program. They have agreed to give us $15,000 back. We will be receiving that check according to last conversation that Mr. Friday, August 2nd was in the email responsible, we got back from the owner of the company. So rather than go into litigation, I thought that would be the way to go.
Thank you.
Mr. Chambers?
Yeah, and having some experience with this for a lot of years, I want to thank our staff. I know, I know personally, Mr. Langfeld worked really, really hard on the phone with the owner. You know, our staff worked real hard. I mean, the tubes were there, maybe not all the tubes, but tubes were there in plenty of time. That's a problem we had the year before, so we've had two bad years. I also appreciate you taking responsibility, but it is not your responsibility. Staff did everything. We had a good contract. Our staff did everything it could. It's not your responsibility to fall on the sword on that. I know you want to, but you don't. Unfortunately, we are not a big fish on the 4th of July. We're a little tiny fish in a big pond and, you know, I know it's going to come up next year that we need to shoot on a different day and I'm not for that, but, you know, just down the road. But again, it's not, I appreciate you taking responsibility, but it's not yours to take.
I appreciate that. We, we got to, we got to change the way we do this. I mean, we've had the same problem year after year, trying to set up and we have weather moving in and getting set up is delayed and...
We're 40-something and two.
Yeah.
You know, we've had two bad, two bad years and, you know, maybe the trend...
Forty-two years.
Tampa also had a bad year last year. Other cities had bad years. I, you know, we do have a trend, a streak going, so...
I, I think we, we can fix it. We just have to approach it differently, so...
Anything else, Mr. Stevenson?
Yes, a couple of the things here, I just wanted to remind council, we have a budget, our, our initial budget workshop this Thursday, 9:00 to 12:00. Police department's bringing donuts. We've got to talk about tentative millage and setting that date. We had originally scheduled it for the 30th of this month. Ms. Donahue is out of town, but really there's three days within this month that we can do this. We've got to do it before, excuse me, we've got to do it before the end of the month because we've got a reporting that is required the first week in August, the first Monday in August, if I'm not mistaken. So we've got to get a tentative millage set. We, I need to have, council have been some discussion, give me some direction. It doesn't matter to me one way or the other when we do this. I think that we're prepared to give you a substantial draft come Thursday. We can do it as early as Thursday if council so desires. Or I can do it on the 30th, how we had it scheduled, but you guys need to tell me when you want it. It doesn't matter to me one way or the other. We can prepare to have it any day, so...
Question?
I just need some direction here.
Do we have enough time to advertise properly for such a tentative millage for Thursday?
We do. I need to know, tonight, we'll take care of it tomorrow. Yeah. It's, we need to call a special meeting to set this tentative millage date. Those, that's the information that I need from council.
Well, can we wait until Thursday when we see what you're...
No, I gotta have it.
Got to advertise tomorrow.
I gotta have at least a day to get this thing up on the website and get it posted.
I think we have, I think we have sufficient time to prepare for the tentative millage meeting. We don't have to act if we find that we don't have enough information. Again, we're not setting the final rate.
Right.
We're setting the tentative millage rate, which can't go above, but we can go below. Okay? So I think that, that staff and, and, and Mr. Stevenson are going to be prepared to give us enough information come Thursday that we can make that decision. I really do. I mean, we want everybody there.
Exactly.
We want everybody, no, 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 we're serious. We want everybody there. There's only three days this month that we can get everybody there and that's today, tomorrow and Thursday. So, so having said that, I still believe that staff will be prepared. I think, I think the information that we're going to get back will be sufficient for us to make the tentative call, the tentative millage rate call. And he's given two days to advertise it. And if we get to the meeting and we can't, we don't do it. We have to, we stall it till another time.
Thank you.
I'll yield to the majority, which has already spoken, but I don't want to set the tentative millage rate at the end of the meeting on Thursday. We're going to be talking about projects, we're going to be talking about capital, we're going to be saying, what happens if we cut this to 50,000 instead of 100,000? What happens if we add 50,000 to this? What happens? And all of those things, and you're going to walk away like every year with a notebook full of notes to go back and plug it in and see what it does to the millage rate. And I don't know how we're realistically think we're going to get through this budget and have enough information to say, okay, I'm comfortable. I mean, I, I read through the draft of the budget already and, I mean, I, I don't see any real glaring problems, but I've got 150 questions. I, I don't know how we're going to have the answers to all those questions in time. If you guys want to shoot for doing it Thursday, that's fine, but I'm not, I don't share your confidence that we're going to be able to do that.
Well, can I, can I ask you, what are the other days I'm leaving? I hate to make it public record, but I'm leaving on the 24th and I don't come back until August 4th. So when we were asked all of these dates months ago, I gave those dates. And then the 30th showed up as the day that we were going to make this decision and I was like, wait, I've had this, I've had these plans for a year, so I...
Well, I don't know what the, I mean, I...
I don't know what other days are available. I'm available, obviously...
I don't know what everybody's schedule is.
Every day until the 24th.
Well, I mean, that leaves us Monday, that leaves us Friday, Monday, Tuesday.
I'm looking at the calendar that was put together here by my assistant. There is, there are three days in this month that everybody's here, the 16th, the 17th and the 18th. I, I don't know what to tell you. There are no other days. Mr. Chalera's time is not on my calendar. I'm assuming that he's available anytime.
I'm always available.
So what is, what is the last day? I guess that's my question. What is the last day that we can, the 30th? We have to set it by the 30th?
No, we can go, we've got a report on the 5th, I think is our deadline to get into the county. Is that correct?
We can't do it any later than the 2nd of August.
Well, on the 2nd of August, I've got James is gone and Ms. Donahue is gone. So that's what I'm telling you guys, I mean...
You know, I, I agree with Mr. Ross. That's going to be, there's going to be a lot going on. This is not something I want to rush. It seems like the last few years, we always crunch this thing in and it's very stressful. You can always, if somebody's not here, and I think everybody should have a say in what we're doing, and if everybody's in agreement, no problem, but you can always phone in like we've done in the past and be part of the conversation. So you'll still have a say and know what's going on. We've done that, I think redevelopment, Mr. Pogolovich was here. So it's not like, you know, your voice will be here, your vote will be here, whatever the case is. So just to try to make it work, but to go through three or four hours of this and then say, well, let's make, let's, let's, let's set this millage rate. I mean, we, we, you want to air it out a little bit. Even the community wants to hear about it some, instead of, this is the time of people who are at work, they don't know what's going on or hear what's going on. And here we are during the morning, everybody's at work and we're going to set a tentative millage rate. Yes, I know we can change it, but it just seems, you know, and we need more, a little time to digest. You're going to go through these, the packet we got, look at it all and then set the tentative millage rate. I know it can change some, I get all that. It's a lot in one morning to do and that's very important. I mean, that's the city's year. So I, I strongly believe that on very important issues, a vote should never be taken unless everybody has a say. I've always said that. And if you can't be here, certainly by phone, your voice should be heard and your vote should be taken. So maybe that might be a solution. I don't know. But Thursday, we'll find out if we're seeing the same or we're apart or what the case is and gives Mr. Stevenson to go crunch some numbers, hey, do this and this, and he may not have the answer right then and there. He may have to get back to us. So, you know, I wouldn't feel overly comfortable doing it, trying to rush it all like that. We got two weeks from that point and, you know, worst case scenario, we do a phone conference, if, if you're comfortable with that. But certainly I, I would be the first to say, if somebody's not here, you don't set the millage and you don't set a vote on very important issues unless you have a full body to vote on it. Just not fair to whoever's missing it.
And I agree with the, I, I agree with the rushing the issue. My only concern was making sure that everybody was here.
Right.
So that we could air everything out. And those being the only three days that we are all here, that's why I suggested doing it on the 18th. I have no great affinity to doing it that day, other than making sure everybody's here. And if Ms. Donahue's comfortable with calling in on that, on the 30th, I have, I'm, I can support that, no problem.
I can't guarantee that I can call you from where I'm going to be.
Or sooner. Yeah, or sooner. You don't have to be on that day or sooner.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just trying to find alternatives or solutions.
I appreciate that.
I'm not trying to put you in a corner.
No, 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 I, I appreciate that. I, I do think we all need to recognize that setting the initial millage is something that we always have an opportunity to go lower. And so to err on the side of safety, we don't go low in the beginning. We, we start knowing that we have another, however many days, when we have to set it the next time. And we've done that almost every year.
Let's do this. I'm the one who's out the next week, so I'm probably the, the, the flying ointment for next week. Pick a time during that time period and I'll agree to call in.
Okay.
For setting, just for setting the special meeting.
So we can have our discussion on Thursday and then we'll set a time and day at that point. So you guys bring your calendars Thursday and if you're okay with that and council's okay with it, then?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Stevenson?
Are you still with us?
So we meet Thursday, discuss the budget. At that time, we'll set a time for the following week. Does that work with you?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else under city manager?
One other thing, and again, this is a date that I need everybody to look at. August 5th, it looks as if Mr. Chambers is out. August 5th at 10:00 a.m., the Patel High School is doing a ribbon cutting. a.m., the Patel High School is doing a ribbon cutting. Uh, they've, they've extended an invitation to everybody to come and see this new school. Um, I don't know that we've been inside. It'll be interesting to, to see the inside of this building. So, um, August 5th, 10:00 a.m., I'll put out a, uh, a council update just to remind everybody, but just to kind of get it on your, on your calendar.
I'm good with that. I'll phone in the ribbon cutting.
[laughing]
Fly a drone in.
[laughing]
Okay?
Always a wise astronaut.
Do you know?
All right, we're good?
We're good.
All right, we'll move to adjourn. Thank you very much.